I have just announced that there is a quorum present and I will call the meeting to order. And for those of you that are new to town meeting, quorum means that we have 100 voters that have checked in and we can begin the meeting. That has been verified and the meeting may continue if the number falls below 100 unless the quorum is questioned. We will go through each article until all articles have been presented and voted upon or until we reach the hour of 10:00 PM. The article on the floor at 10:00 PM will be completed before the adjournment. At this time, I ask that all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As is our tradition, I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember those we lost since Thank you. A few opening comments. This meeting is a culmination of many meetings and many hours of hard work by members of the administration, boards, committees, and commission. This is your meeting and my job is to make sure we go through the articles of the warrant in an orderly fashion and that debate and discussion is fair and balanced. At this time, I ask kindly to please silence your mobile phones. If I ask again, it won't be as kind. Please wait to be recognized before speaking from the floor. There are microphones in each of the aisles and I ask if you would please go to the microphones if you wish to make comments or discuss an issue. While we may not agree on every subject, it is important to remember that we all live in the same community and will continue to do so after the meeting. For those of you that are new to town meeting, there's a good resource put together by the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth, Citizen's Guide to Town Meetings, and it's available on the Northborough Town website and the Secretary of the Commonwealth's website. At this time, I'll ask by raising your hand, please indicate if you are new to the town meeting process. Welcome to the most... This is the clearest type of democratic process where every voter has an opportunity to vote, comment, discuss the issues on the warrant. We have something different this year. We are now in the world of electronics. You're wondering if we have electronic voting, why do I have a card? I am a strong believer in certain occasions, it's important to have both a belt and suspenders. At this time, I'd like to go through a couple of practice votes using the electronic devices and how the electronic devices work. Now, if you look at your screen, which is in the upper right-hand corner of your device, you see that it's blank. Worry not, it goes to sleep and that's something none of us should do this evening. I'm going to ask the first question. And are we gonna pop that? Okay. First question is a statement that says, "This month is May." Is that a yes or no? And you start by pushing one of the two buttons, either the green or the red button, to turn your device on. Once you've turned it on, then you can vote either yes or no. Okay, we are going to turn the voting off in just a couple more seconds. Final chance, the voting is closed. Obviously, some people here have a sense of humor. Now, some folks may want to change their vote while the vote is open. You can do that. What happens is if you vote, say yes on a question and you say, "Oh, no, I wanted to say no," just simply vote no. And the system is smart enough to understand that, okay, they changed their mind, they wanted to change their vote. It does not affect the final number for the total. And you can do that up until I announce that the vote is closed. Okay, let's go with the second test question. This is the Shrewsbury Town Meeting. If you are not here for the Shrewsbury Town Meeting, you can deplane right away. Okay, we'll close in about five seconds. Now the voting is closed. We've done two test votes. Is everyone comfortable with the voting process? Well, then let's begin the process. Beginning with a couple of steps that we have before we begin looking at the articles, and that is the recognition of the people seated in the front of the auditorium. We have our administration team, Town Council. The Town Clerk is back here with me. And we also have the Financial Planning Committee as well as the Appropriations Committee. We have seated in the auditorium seats members of the Northborough School Committee as well. From time to time, I may ask for their input and go forward with that, and we'll certainly try to go through as many articles as we can this evening. That being said, I now turn the process over to the Select Board. I'm a slow learner. And they have some certificates and awards they wish to present.
I'd like to welcome you all to the 2024 Northborough Town Meeting. Thank you all for coming and participating in our local government. We have awards tonight and they are going to be a number of different people who have served and we'd like to give them recognition. Under the Appropriations Committee, we have Richard Nieberg, who served for 27 years. Cable TV Advisor Committee, Richard Sui, 17 years. Community Affairs Committee, Jason Hay, six years. Council on Aging, Adrianne Cost, and we lost Adrianne this year. Cultural Council, Craig Cox, six years. We also lost Craig. Suzanne Cox, six years. Lourdonna Tyron Pandit, I should have looked at these before I had to say them, six years. Janine Vitale, three years under Cultural Council. Earthworks Board, Christopher Tisadis, three years. Ronald Dusset, six years. Financial Planning Committee, Mike Hodge, 18 years. Tom Sapparo, 10 years. The Housing Partnership Committee, Michael Durbin, 18 years. Municipal Code and Bylaw Committee, Brian Strand, six years. Regional School Committee, Karen Ayers, three years. Scholarship Committee, Vikram Verma, three years. Select Board, Kristen Wickstead, three years. Youth Commission, Gretchen Bean, 15 years. Gila Schneider Nachum, seven years. Sherry Clark, three years. Zoning Board of Appeals, Fran Backstrand, 12 years. Mark Rutan, 21 years. And we also have recipient tonight of the Thomas S. Green Service Award. I want to congratulate Vicki Colleen for winning the Thomas S. Green Public Service Award. Winners of this award must illustrate exceptional competence and efficient handling of all assigned responsibilities, enthusiastic performance of tasks above and beyond the call of duty, cooperative, helpful, and friendly attitude toward the public and fellow employees, the community involvement outside the scope of job-related responsibilities. We are so lucky to have someone that is so dedicated and hardworking. Vicki has truly made a difference in our community. She deserves this recognition and more. We have had an impromptu celebration today at the senior center luncheon to share her award with the seniors at lunch, and I'd like to share her recommendations and her winnings with the meeting tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think the recognition certificates and awards is a true indication of how the town of Northborough benefits significantly by the volunteerism that we see on a regular basis. So these people have certainly made major contributions to the success of this community. With that being said, let's begin with Article One, Appoint Deputy Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to ratify the appointment of the moderator, Gerald Hickman, as deputy moderator as provided by Article Two, Section 2-2 of the Northborough Home Rule Charter.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. If I may have the motion, please. Just a quick comment. Gerald Hickman has been the deputy moderator through my entire tenure as your moderator. You may or may not know it, but Jerry, as I tell him on a regular basis, is just a heartbeat away. He's here to back me up in case I'm not able to go on, and he is certainly capable, competent, and willing to be able to do that. This is a simple majority vote. So Article One, if we can put that up. Appointing Deputy Moderator to see if the town will vote to ratify the appointment of the moderator of Gerald Hickman as deputy moderator as provided by Article Two, Section 2-2 of the Northborough Home Rule Charter. You may vote. Let's give it five more seconds if you haven't had a chance to do it. Okay, the voting is closed. Jerry was a close one, but welcome aboard. Article Two, Compensating Balance Agreement.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a presentation on this? Yes. Our Director of Finance?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jason Little, I'm the Finance Director for the town. This article is an annual article that appears on the warrant every year. It could be viewed as a housekeeping article. This article gives the authority to the treasurer to enter into what's called a compensating balance agreement with banks so that the town can obtain banking services. Through this arrangement, the town is able to obtain its banking services without them being budgeted for within the town's general fund budget, and in exchange, the town compensates the bank through receiving a lower interest rate for its earnings.
Is there any discussion on Article Three? I'm sorry, Article Two, I misspoke. And when you get to the microphone, please give your name and address, please.
Shepherd Grove, Northborough, Massachusetts. Any chance that the town, you know, can create its own bank? You know, instead of giving interest to some bank and giving the town away to, you know, in its finances to some bank who's just gonna screw the town over and suck all our money through the evil of interest on loans? To look into developing, kinda like how they have state-run banks, to having a bank that's run entirely by the town so we can finance our own operations without being reliant on banks beholder to Wall Street and international bankers? So, you know, I advise the people in the town to finance, to look into interest-free finance and looking into trying to develop a town bank or the town or the region issuing our own currency so we can provide for our needs locally instead of being dependent on Wall Street.
Any other discussion or debate? Hearing none. This is what we are voting on for Article Two. I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F. This is Article Two that you're voting on? Again, remember, please wake up your device if it's asleep and then you can vote. The voting will close in five seconds. The voting is closed. This was a simple majority and Article Two has passed. Article Three, Prior Years Bills.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the FY 2024 Health Insurance Budget, the sum of $1,481, to pay one bill totaling $666 to Town of Grafton for prior fiscal year Veterans District Administration Services and three bills totaling $815 to Community Advocate for prior fiscal year planning board advertising fees.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by Timothy McInerney, our Town Administrator.
Hello and good evening. My name's Tim McInerney. I wouldn't call it a presentation, just to let the body know that from time to time, bills come in after we close books and we need town many approval to pay those bills. The Select Board member just read to you what the rationale was behind the advertisements to the Community Advocate for public hearings held by Planning Board and for the Veterans District, which we have four communities a part of. The Town of Grafton is the host community and they billed us after we closed our books for $666, and we want to be able to pay them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate on Article Three? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to transfer from FY 2024 Health Insurance Budget, the sum of $1,481, to pay one bill totaling $666 to the Town of Grafton for prior fiscal year Veterans District Administration Services and three bills totaling $815 to Community Advocate for prior fiscal year Planning Board advertising fees. This requires a four-fifths vote, or in digital terminology, that would be 80.1% of the vote. Okay, the vote will close in five seconds. The voting has closed. As you can see, Article Three has passed. Article Four, Town Budget.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of $26,445,788 for town government as displayed in the warrant booklet distributed at this town meeting. And to meet the set appropriation, the following sums available for appropriation be transferred from. Transfer from cemetery sale of lots, $14,250. Transfer from cemetery trust income, $25,842. Transfer from debt exclusion premium reserve, $454. Transfer from DPW Transportation Fund, $2,982. Transfer from Conservation Commission Fees, $175. Transfer from Fire Emergency Medical Services Revolving Fund, $377,861. Transfer from Recreation Revolving Fund, $100,000. Transfer from Animal Control Revolving Fund, $30,600. Transfer from Peg Access Cable Related Fund, $300,847. Transfer from Medicare Part D Subsidy, $84,632. Transfer from Free Cash, $500,000, for a total of $1,437,643 and that the sum of $25,8,145 be raised by taxation.
Motion has been made and seconded. We have a presentation by Town Administrator McInerney and the Finance Director, Little.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim McInerney, Town Administrator. Tell me if you can't hear me or if I fade out, I'm losing my voice, I apologize for So in your warrant, there's a couple pages that you might want to follow along with, page 58, 57, and 61, so 57, 58, and 61 in your book. Before I begin, Mr. Moderator, thank you and thank you all for being here tonight. The Appropriations Committee and Financial Planning Committee met from the time I walked in the door here in December for six weeks back-to-back on Tuesday and Thursday nights along with the Select Board going through requests for budget increases from department heads. These committees looked at the detail that was presented to them. There is some growth associated with this budget. I was gonna take you through a lengthy presentation, but I'm going to be up here a long time if I do that. But I will tell you that the revenues that we're using in two cases are, one case, one department's request eclipsed what's allowed under Proposition Two and a Half, just for a little precursor of what I'm gonna cover. But I need to just take a moment and tell you that the staff in this organization is extremely professional and competent beyond belief. So I want to just say thank you to Jason and to Lisa and to Lee and to my staff, Angie, Diane, and Linda, because we couldn't have put this together without them and DPW and the cable. You know, getting the message out to people that we're having town meeting was a big deal for the Select Board. They want people to participate in democracy and participate in government overall. So it's important that we get the word out and we pay attention to the people who are doing the work. So I just wanted to acknowledge them and say thank you to them. So having said that, I'll run through this... Is this on? Thank you. Okay, so the first thing we did is we took the department heads' requests back in January and they were certainly more than what you have before you tonight, so we had to whittle them down. And working with the Appropriations Committee and the Financial Planning Committee, we tried to work through what people's elasticity was to pay for these services that we're proposing. So first, we looked at demographic information, and that's what this slide deals with. And it was interesting to note, I think, for a lot of folks, the filed income tax for this community and the state of Massachusetts was just over $1 billion, which I think was interesting in terms of how much we actually have and how much we send to the state in filed income tax. Residential and commercial industrial property tax, CIPs, not to be confused with capital improvement plan, as my staff pointed out many times, that that is two terms that we use quite often. But the residential, the makeup of your tax base is 73% residential, 27% commercial industrial. It's important to note that every time you lose commercial industrial property tax, your individual, single-family residential tax bill goes up. So it's important to me, it's important to the community to maintain or grow that commercial industrial tax base. So this is just a high-level view of the demographics. We also compared departments' requests to sister communities and what their budget levels were and what their department staffing levels were, and we were below in all categories, I think, except for the library, which we have to dig a little deeper on for that particular piece. But that is one place that we need to continue to grow because those staff and those services that they provide are enjoyed by the community. This slide may be tough to read, I understand that. I tried to go over this in cable, but I'm not so sure I did. But it just basically talks about our tax effort as a community and where we sit in relation to other communities like Southborough, Boylston, Shrewsbury, Grafton, Berlin, Hudson, and Westborough. So as a percentage of your filed income tax, this is what your tax effort is for the town of Northborough. We looked at revenues, tax receipts, this is all your property taxes that we pay collectively between industrial, commercial property tax and residential. State aid as a percentage of the budget continues to decline. It's just not a good model, to be honest with you, but it's the one we have to work with. The budget on page 61, if you look at that document, the bottom line calls out that it is a balanced budget. It is growing, it's growing in really three areas. We have fixed costs that are increasing, namely West account, retirement, health insurance, and trash. Those are three main areas of automatic fixed cost that we're going to have to deal with in the next fiscal year. That top of that sheet on page 61 deals with revenue. This is the revenue that we have for fiscal '25. And then this just further breaks down the revenues for fiscal '25. The allowance under Proposition Two and a Half is $1,558, and then we have an estimated new growth of $30 million, which will yield $428,000. So that subtotal is 1.9. We're using the governor's budget, which is the state aid number I just referred to that's under 10% of our operating budget. And her budget does have us increase by $86,512, which is not a lot. The House budget has it a little bit lower. It'll go through a process through the Senate and then it'll go to reconciliation and then it'll go back to the governor and then we'll have a final number. And then the second biggest, third biggest component is local receipts. So total new revenue for fiscal '25 is 2.4 million. And when we get to expenses, you'll see that the school department's request was like 2.3 million, so we have $100,000 under new growth in what's allowed under Proposition Two and a Half to spend and to manage the operations. Other pieces did underwrite this, the fire department revolving account, they have an ambulance service, they have ambulance fees, they charge for transportation, and that's what that first line is of 377,861. Cable receipts reserved, so... Cable receipts reserved, so cable, everybody has a franchise fee on their cable bill. If you still have cable, please get cable if you don't. But there's a fee that goes to pay for cable, and this, this is where this fee shows up, and it helps us run all the, all the meetings that are publicized, or run through this particular dollar figure. Then recreation, and then the total is nine thirty-seven. This is just the proposed budget. I think this is on your page sixty-one as well. This, this slide just breaks apart where your tax dollar goes as a pie chart. I don't know if it displays well. It's not that bad, but it's not great. So some of the fixed costs or automatic increases I tried to lay out for the board and for the financial planning and the Appropriations Committee. The department request for the school department totaled two million, three forty-seven, two eighty-three. And this little bracketed number down the bottom, I came from another community that was extremely conservative and I wanted to know how much this was costing us. So I have that in my mind when I go through this, because we are very much aware that this does impact the taxpayer. And there's some articles we're dealing with in this town meeting that will offset, for the most vulnerable people in the community, those tax increases. So we're trying to hedge against that increase. But just these three items alone, for an average, this is an average single-family tax bill, is an increase of three hundred and forty-six dollars. So I just try to break that out just for transparency's sake. And then we looked at fixed costs for health insurance, West County Retirement, and solid waste. Again, these are incremental values in the right blue bracketed is what each one of those numbers cost on average. So that's, what that is, is pretty self-explanatory. The town requests, we do have two police officers proposed in the budget. We have an assistant library director proposed in the budget. Some restoration of hours so they can be open on Monday morning. They are open now, but there's another group funding that line item right now. The clerk's office, when we did the analysis, we had two people in our office, but two point five is the average throughout our sister communities. With everything that's coming up, and I'll let the department speak to these questions if you have them, there, there's good rationale, and they've obviously convinced me and convinced the committees that these positions were needed. But we can get to that in a moment. But again, I just want to show you what those department requests broke out to be and what they cost. So this total budget request is two, two eighty-two is the total number for those fixed costs and town requests. Again, these are just the positions, and the departments obviously put these up and gave a lengthy explanation for, for the need for these. I think what's interesting is the DPW Admin Assistant is funded fifty percent by Enterprise Water and Sewer. So there's less of an impact to the taxpayer. In terms of reserves, this community is very strong in your fiscal position and your cash management. You, obviously, the eighty-million-dollar budget without sewer and water enterprise funds, and you're at eight percent, and you have a written policy that's adopted by various boards and committees to be within five and ten percent of that policy. And your reserves with free cash is six point three million dollars. So to summarize just the impact, we have an estimated single-family value at six hundred fifty-five, six ninety-one. That's an estimate to go up. That's what the values are doing and what they're trending at. That's a five percent increase. And then the fixed costs make up one thirty-eight, and then the school budgets make up three forty-six, and then the town request is one forty-eight. This new revenue and offsets are a reduction of eighteen. It's just there, just so we can keep track of it. But at the end of the day, it's a six point eight percent increase, or six fourteen is the annual average. I think it comes out to fifty or fifty-one a month, which is not nothing, which is why I think communities look to aggregation, for electric aggregation, even though we can't guarantee saving money when we aggregate electricity. That's the goal, and that has been the outcome in, in communities that I've worked for. So we want to hedge wherever we can. There's small things that we do every day to bring down the cost of operations from not mailing checks to employees anymore and having an online portal for them to request vacation and to see the W twos and not have to print anything out of our office, to coordinating paving jobs with utilities so we can share in that cost for paving. All those small things add up, and we continue to try to manage those things as we go. This slide just deals with the commercial industrial tax base. What I asked the assessment to do is to tell us, you know, if we lost some growth in industrial, commercial industrial tax base, what would happen to the average? So if you have three point one billion of assets for residential class, and you have one billion, nine forty, nine, I'm sorry, nine forty, and commercial industrial property, if that was to be reduced by five percent, the residential increase would be about two twenty-two. So again, it just goes back to just being mindful of the commercial industrial tax base to keep that up, because if you wanted to enjoy the same services you have today, you'd be paying a lot more if you didn't have the commercial tax base. I've talked plenty, so I will tell you, I will happily ask, answer questions. I will ask for a little dispensation from the body to allow me to rely on Jason a little bit for some specific detail for line item movements and/or details relative to master general law as it relates to our budget. But does the body have any questions I can answer?
Please use the microphone.
I don't know how many of you highly-paid professionals are going to take this seriously. Okay, but instead of trying to rely on international corporations to come to this town, and instead of paying for all these unnecessary improvements to making all the, the cars nice and the... Okay, why don't we put all the capital investment money in building structures in the downtown area and all of it to renovating downtown areas, so we have a bunch of small businesses come in, instead of being reliant on giant corporations who don't care about this town, to bring all these small businesses in, and that would break up, bring up the tax base of the town without being dependent on international corporate forces. So I really hope people consider that where we put our money, not into making our equipment look nice, which is not necessary, paying highly-paid specialist professionals who we have no need for their services, but to actually build up the infrastructure of the center of the town and also around like Harvey and stuff, so we can have a lot of like small businesses come in and improve the effects of the town and get, have that commercial tax base come up that way as opposed to trying to whore ourselves to Amazon or some international corporation. So I, I hope people consider that. I don't know if any of these people will take that seriously, but really think about that.
Sir, may I ask if you would please give your name and address once again?
Yes, Michael A. Leder, Nine Juniper Brook Road.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
Terry Halloran, fourteen Treetop Circle. On page sixty-one, there was a couple of numbers that stood out to me in terms of taking a look at the overall financial picture of the town. Most notably is the significant change in the amount of the unused levy cap. So in prior years, we ran over four million dollars of available taxation under the levy limit. This year, in the proposed budget, it's down to about two million dollars. If you look at our rate of spending, it's very clear that we're going to be near the two and a half levy limit cap, whether it be in fiscal twenty-six or in fiscal twenty-seven. One of the most dangerous things, I think, in, in, in the way in which Proposition Two and a Half works and the way town finances work, is when we get to that point where we're at a levy limit and we have to make some hard choices and go to overrides. We had this problem in the town twenty years ago. That's why we all have green trash bags today, is because we sucked it out of the, the town budget and put it into different funds and different ways to fund those things. As I look at the budget and the spending trends that we have, we're clearly going to have a prop-two-and-a-half problem. I was wondering if the Appropriations Committee or the Financial Planning Committee has kind of looked at what the models look like for years beyond fiscal twenty-four and what twenty-five or twenty-six might look like. How much we spend today clearly impacts what our spend rate will be in the future and how much we should be concerned about maybe we've made a bigger jump in some spending than we should. And I look for your response and answers, and thank you kindly.
Actually, I, I fully plan to ask for recommendations. I just wanted to hear the discussion and debate first. Any other discussion or debate? Hearing none, may I have a recommendation from the Select Board, please?
Select Board recommends Article Four as presented.
And may I have a recommendation from the Appropriations Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Hearing no questions, no more debate. This is what we are voting on for Article Four, the Town Budget. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of twenty-six million, four hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars for town government as displayed in the warrant book distributed at this town meeting. And to meet said appropriations, the following sums available for appropriate appropriation be transferred from: Transfer from cemetery sale of lots, four, fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty. Transfer from cemetery trust income, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred forty-two. Transfer from debt exclusion premium reserve, four hundred fifty-four dollars. Transfer from DPU Transportation Fund, two thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars. Transfer from the Conservation Committee Fees, one hundred seventy-five dollars. Transfer from Fire Emergency Medical Services Revolving Fund, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hu- eight hundred sixty-one. Transfer from Recreation Revolving Fund, one hundred thousand dollars. Transfer from Animal Control Revolving Fund, thirty thousand, six hundred dollars. Transfer from the PEG Access Cable Related Fund, three hundred thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars. Transfer from Medical, Medicare Part D Subsidy, eighty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars. And transfer from Free Cash, five hundred thousand dollars, for a total of one million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred, forty-three dollars. And that's, and that the sum of twenty-five million, eight, eight thousand, one hundred, forty-five dollars be raised by taxation. This is a simple majority vote, and the voting is now open. The voting will close in five seconds. The voting is closed. Article Four passes. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of six million, nine hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars for water, sewer, and solid waste funds as displayed in Article Five of the warrant for the operation of the water, sewer, and solid waste utilities in the amounts two million, nine hundred, ten thousand, four hundred, forty-one dollars for the water fund, two million, seven hundred sixty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars for the sewer fund, and one million, three hundred, two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the solid waste fund. And to meet said appropriation, the following sums available for appropriation be transferred from: Water Fund, Free Cash, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. Solid Waste Fund, Free Cash, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifty. Raise and appropriate from taxation, Solid Waste General Fund Subsidy, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, for a total of nine hundred eighty-three thousand, ninety-one dollars, and that the sum of five million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred, forty-six dollars be financed from water, sewer, and solid waste revenues.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. We have a presentation from our DPW Director.
David, can you help me put this on just the presentation mode, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Tim, and David. I'm Scott Sharptier, Public Works Director. I'm going to go over the three enterprise funds. The water, sewer, and solid waste budgets are each independent enterprise funds as authorized by state statute. These provide separate accounting and financial mechanisms for each of the municipal services for which a fee is charged. This allows a community to demonstrate to the public the portion of operating costs that's recovered through user charges and the portion that's subsidized through taxes, if there is any. On average, the town of Northborough uses approximately nine hundred thousand gallons of water per day, all of which is purchased from the MWRA. Our water system includes an interconnection to the authority off Bartlett Street, two water storage tanks, and four inactive wells. Our water system serves approximately eighty percent of the community, with the remaining properties being served by private wells. The proposed FY twenty-five water enterprise fund operating budget is two point nine million dollars, of which it accounts one hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollar increase over last year of five point two percent. This increase is attributed to two primary factors. One is a seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollar increase to our MWRA assessment, and another seventeen thousand dollars for the creation of the new administrative support position that was approved in the prior, the prior article. Revenue for the current fiscal year is expected to fall short of our, our projections. This is primarily due to the very wet summer we had last year. Revenue for the FY twenty-five budget is estimated conservatively to be level as last year's revenue. So we expect, after the completion of a detailed rate study, that revenue, that, that rates will increase slightly. They typically increase in the three to five percent range annually. This is our sewer collection system. It serves approximately thirty percent of Northborough. The area includes nine pump stations, and all discharges all flow to the Marlborough Westerly Wastewater Treatment Plant. The proposed FY twenty-five sewer enterprise fund budget, sewer enterprise fund budget is two million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred, forty-six dollars. This represents an increase of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, or ten percent more than the FY twenty-four budget. The number one contributing factor to this is the, an increase in our estimated cost to pay Marlborough for the service they provide, which is treating our sewer. That amounts three hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. As a means to reduce the rate impact, we've had temporary cuts to a variety of programs within the sewer, sewer division. We're anticipating a slight rate increase. We'll have to do another detailed rate study to determine what rate adjustments are required to support services. The solid waste program manages the town's trash, recycling, yard debris, and hazardous waste disposal. This fund administers three very large contracts. One for the collection of solid waste and recycling, another for the disposal of solid waste, and a third for the processing of recyclable materials. The total FY twenty-five solid waste budget is one point, one, one million, three hundred and two dollars and six hundred and fifty dollars, one point three million, which represents a two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar increase, with twenty-five percent over last year. This is largely attributed to two factors. One is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar increase under our collection contract, and another is a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase to the cost for processing of recyclable materials. In fact, the, the cost to recycle a ton of material exceeds the cost to dispose of a ton of solid waste. In addition, we've added twenty-five thousand dollars to, twenty-five thousand dollars to the cost to process and dispose of yard debris at the, at the highway garage. It's not allowed to spend more than a year there under master EP regulations. Do I have any questions from the crowd?
Yeah, I have a question.
May I have your name and address, please?
I'm Rüdiger Volk, on Hundred Thirty-Seven East Main Street.
I'm Rüdiger Volk on one hundred thirty-seven East Main Street. I wonder in this statement which you gave, why is not the town increase the green bag trash? So that people, other people have, for example, Harvey Service, and they pay for themselves or container, and the taxpayer has to pay for other people who have trash. So why is not the town deciding to increase the green bag trash? And I calculated it needs only two dollars more for a bag to, to make the budget. Thank you.
Through the moderator, we evaluate our costs, our, our fees for, for bag sales every few years. We did it about three years ago before the pandemic. We're amongst the top third of our peer communities in the cost for the bags. The majority of towns that participate in the paysay throw program break out the cost approximately half and half, fifty percent tax subsidy, fifty percent revenue. We're actually heavier on the bag revenue side than, than the tax levy. So we're, we're maintaining the bag prices, and we have a better than, better than other communities' tax subsidy.
Any other discussion or debate? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on for Article Five. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum, sum of six million, nine hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars for water, sewer, and solid waste funds as displayed in Article Five of the warrant for the operation of the water, sewer, and solid waste utilities in the amounts, two million, nine hundred ten thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars for the water fund, two million, seven hundred sixty nine, sixty thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars for the sewer fund, and one million, three hundred, two thousand, six hundred fifty dollars for the solid waste fund. And to meet said appropriation, the following sums available for appropriation be transferred from water fund free cash, two hundred ten dollars for, for, two hundred ten thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars, solid waste fund free cash, one hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars, raise and appropriate by taxation, solid waste general fund subsidy, five hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, for a total of nine hundred eighty-three thousand, ninety-one dollars, and the sum of five million, nine hundred ninety thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars be financed from water, sewer, and solid waste revenues. This is a majority vote. Most of you have already voted. If you have not yet voted, please do so. And before I close the vote, I did want to let you know that I actually overlooked, but my deputy has my back and reminded me that we were going to get a recommendation from the select board.
Select Board recommends this article.
And the Appropriations Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. We have five more seconds for the vote. Okay, the vote is closed. Article Five passes. Article Six, Northborough K through eight schools budget. Mr. McKnight.
Good evening. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation the sum of twenty-nine million, one hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars for the operation of the Northborough Public Schools.
The motion has been made and seconded, and I understand we have a presentation from our school's superintendent.
So, good evening. Greg Martino, and I have the privilege of serving as your superintendent. So, the public schools of Northborough budget process really is driven through its strategic plan, Vision Twenty Twenty-Six, and is guided based on its mission, which is to educate, inspire, and challenge all students. Including in that strategic plan is the vision, which really speaks to making sure our students are prepared to leave Northborough Public Schools as collaborators, critical and creative thinkers, communicators, socially and civically engaged, growth-oriented, healthy and balanced. In addition to the goals outlined in the district strategic plan, each year, the school committee sets budget priorities. These budget priorities are used to guide the budget process and make key decisions. Although many of the items on the budget priorities were not accomplished, it still sets a guidepost for us to move forward. In the FY twenty-five budget, the priorities that are met are to create math interventionist positions, also to create a, and reestablish a fifth grade strings program, and also to maximize current staffing resources. Additionally, the budget achieves the goal of funding the technology replacement cycle, creating and maintaining outdoor learning spaces, and identifying sustainability issues. It also continues to support the school committee's class size policy and maintains healthy class sizes. The school committee approved budget before you this evening is twenty-nine million, one hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars, which represents a three point nine nine percent increase over fiscal year twenty-four. What is included in this budget are instructional materials. We are seeing a shift in the way instructional materials are licensed. No longer are we able to buy a textbook that will last the district for five to seven to ten years, and then renew that textbook when it no longer is in service. What we are now finding is that curriculum materials are licensed on an annual basis, similar to software subscriptions, and that is having an impact on our overall budget. A couple highlights, we are moving forward with a middle school ELA curriculum, also focusing on the middle school strings instruments, and also adding a human resource information system across our three districts. Pre-K through eight, Southborough, pre-K through eight, Northborough, and Algonquin Regional High School, we have over eight hundred and fifty employees, and an HR system would allow us to become much more efficient in terms of how we manage our staffing. In terms of personnel that is included in the budget, again, we have two math interventionists. Due to the needs of our student population, we have an additional special education teacher, and also a educator support professional. We also have an ELA coordinator. We funded a portion of the person's salary through S R three. We are moving that back onto the budget in FY twenty-five. Also, a music educator, a point four strings teacher, and a point zero eight of adaptive physical education teacher. Currently, across the three districts, there is a point eight adaptive PE teacher. We are making that person a full-time position, and Northborough's portion of that position is point zero eight. So I would characterize the FY twenty-five budget as a level services budget with incremental growth areas in mathematics curriculum, and adding an instrumental program at the middle school level. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What I'd like to do is ask if the select board would give a recommendation. I don't know if the mic could pick that up.
I will attempt, oh, now it's working. The select board definitely recommends approval of the budget.
Thank you. And the, and the K through eight committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, we unanimously support this budget.
Thank you. And the Appropriations Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Now, there appear to be questions, and I'm going to ask your name and address once again.
Yes, of course, this, this process thing. Michael A. Leonard, Ninety Hundred Park Road, North from Massachusetts. Listen, okay, I'm a very, very big supporter of education. I'm all into developing creative minds for music and art. I think that's very, very important. However, I want to mention two things. Number one, the school has all this beautiful infrastructure. There's no need for all these highly paid specialists, okay, to, you know, drain the budget of the town, and fifty percent of the town, of town budgets going to the schools. Okay, second of all, the textbooks, right? This is all corporate planned obsolescence, you know, every, it's deliberate fraud in every single year so they can make more and more money. They issue new and new. We need to get away from this bigger and greater, okay? Educational outcomes for children have not improved in fifty years. In fact, children are being worse at critical thinking, they're becoming highly trained robots. Okay, we need to get rid of all this new technology. I'm not saying that all technology is bad, but I'm saying that we don't need the latest and greatest, we don't need this enormous school budget. Instead, what we should do is put all that money in the school, we, to, into infrastructure, like I said, building housing, bringing in small business, okay? Take it away from the school, take it away from the specialists, and put it all into building infrastructure and creating town finances such as a town-run bank, so we don't have to be dependent on the corporations, or the corporate system, or these textbooks by these corporate people who are just looking to make money through planned obsolescence. So I really want all you guys to consider this, seriously, and really, really think about it. I know that people have a hard time with a different paradigm, they can't, you know, their brains are trained to think a certain way, and everyone's just thinking about their job and money, but we need to get away from that entirely and think about the future of the town and our children. Thank you.
Over here, please.
Mr. Moderator, Jacob Jones, one oh six Green Street. I rise in support of Article Six with the only added comment that I would encourage us to move away from the wit and wisdom portion of our curriculum at the earliest possible opportunity. That's based on information through my own children and my assessment of the wit and wisdom part of the curriculum. I would encourage us to move away from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Hi, Catherine Colglazier, eighty-nine Howard Street. I also rise in support with Article Six, but I have some questions regarding the information regarding the special education programs and budgeting. As someone who came out of Northborough Public Schools and who utilized the special education system myself, both in and out, I was wondering, when you were talking about implementing paraprofessionals and stuff like that, I noticed that when I'm actually looking at the percent change, a lot of these stuff went down. For example, when it comes to special education programs, for example, programs, non-public schools, tuition out is fifty-one percent down. When it comes to transportation, health services, that percentage is down. It's on the green piece, and if you look at the back, this part is disproportionately down when talking about other systems. So I was wondering, what was your reasoning for that, as well as due to one of the grants that you're using, which I believe is under IDEA? One, town has to legally pay for people who have IEP slash five oh fours with these systems, so I was wondering how the town was going to handle that with reducing the special education budget?
Yes.
Thank you for the question. So the two budget line items in the special education budget that are most variable from year to year is transportation out, so students who require specialized transportation to and from school and to and from specialized programs. So you'll see a significant decrease in that line item that is just based on the needs of transportation for students in fiscal year twenty-five. The second area is specialized programming, so out-of-district placement. Again, this can be variable from year to year. You'll see that there is a decrease in the number, the number of, of the amount of specialized programming that were required for, for next year, and this is just based on what the needs of the students are as we look at that FY twenty-five school.
As well as teaching, it's eight point two eight percent down.
And special education teaching, Becky, do you want to, we had some shifts, and Becky can speak specifically.
Well, thank you.
Hi, I'm Becky Pellegrino, I'm the Director of Finance. So the me, the biggest shift for the teaching line item is if you look at the line underneath it where there is medical and therapeutic specialists. In previous years, we had our OTs, PTs, and SLPs. Those salaries accounted for in the teaching line item. We're trying to align our accounts with the DESI chart of accounts, and so we have created a new chart, rather, a new account entitled Medical and Therapeutic Specialists, so those salaries are now included in that line item underneath.
Over here, please.
Megan Robbins, one hundred Western Terrace. I have two things. One question, for the outplacement of students, how, if, say, a student does come into district that needs to be outplaced, or there's a student currently in district that needs to be outplaced, and it's not in the budget, how do you account for that if with the students' IEP and legal reasonable accommodations, they, it's deemed that they need that outplacement for a therapeutic program?
So if a student moves into the district, or a student requires out of placement, out of district placement because of how the student might be presenting at the time, we do not budget for, we, we budget for the known amount of students and what we expect. We do have students who we can predict whether they may need out-of-district students, but we don't budget for that. If the, the Northborough town has to pay for additional students, we do seek circuit breaker, extraordinary relief through circuit breaker, and that helps defray the cost. But typically, what happens is we have to find it within appropriated budget.
And then just a comment in support of the budget particularly for special ed, the APE teacher. I work with students who work with the APE teacher, and it does wonders, and some people may not know, understand these specialized programs, understand the importance of the finances that go there, but when you have students who with severe disabilities that cannot access gym, this is their, this is how they access gym, is through, one of these ways is through this APE teacher, and it really, it's very beneficial.
Any other discussion or debate on Article Six? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation the sum of twenty-nine million, one hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars for the operation of the Northborough Public Schools. And the voting has begun. We have five more seconds. The voting is closed. Article Six passes. Article Seven, Algonquin Regional High School District Budget. Kathleen Howell.
Karen Aris, change.
Well, you didn't tell me.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to raise and appropriate by taxation the sum of fifteen million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred forty-seven dollars for Northborough share of the assessment for the operation and debt service of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District.
Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by our superintendent of schools.
I wish I could share with you that the I wish I could share with you that the Superintendent for the Northborough Regional School District was much more engaging and a better presenter, but he's not. So, so again, Greg Martino, and the privilege of serving as the Superintendent for the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District. So again, similar to the pre-K through eight Northborough budget, the budget process is really driven by the strategic plan and also the school committee's approved budget priorities. So in fiscal year '25, the priorities were to recommend, fund the recommended curriculum replacement cycle and explore alternatives, alternative curriculum cost models, to expand experiential learning opportunities for juniors and seniors, ensure that students are healthy and balanced learners, prioritizing social, emotional, and physical well-being of students. Also, seeking to create a special education team chairperson position. And then in terms of finance and operations, seeking to achieve net zero, expand the solar array on Algonquin Regional High School's roof, creating and funding a special education stabilization fund, and seeking to use field rental revenues to create and fund an athletic complex maintenance schedule. And lastly, to develop a sustainable contribution to the OPEB funding liability. Many of these were accomplished, but not all. In terms of the significant budget increases for FY '25, we did see an increase in technology, infrastructure, and maintenance, Worcester regional retirement system, special education out-of-district transportation, transportation for regular busing, maintenance of buildings, classroom instructional technology, and the total is $415,951. The budget before you this evening is what I would again characterize as a level services budget. The total budget is $27,871,426, which represents a 4.82 percent increase over fiscal year '24. Based on the regional agreement, Northborough's portion of the budget The school committee did vote to apply $675,000 of excess and deficiency. Northborough's portion of that E and D is $415,395. And Northborough's total assessment is $14,119,879, which represents a 4.21 percent increase. The school committee also has had many conversations around how to maintain the facility. Algonquin Regional High School is the largest asset in both the community of Northborough and Southborough. It totals 350,000 square feet. And other than the athletic complex article that was passed last year, the school committee has not brought forth capital project articles to the voters since the ad renovation project in the early 2000s. The strategy the Northborough School, the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee is taking is looking at its capital plan, its multi-year capital plan, and thinking about what it will take to accomplish funding items in the capital plan. So its intention is to bring forward approximately $400,000 annually to the voters to complete capital projects. This year, the total of capital projects is $391,000. Northborough's share of that, based on, again, the regional agreement, is $242,077. And this would fund the replacement of the redundant domestic hot water boiler, boiler blower motor, glycol in the heating loop, lighting controls, and a failed HVAC unit above the guidance department. Again, a portion by the regional agreement, Northborough's share of the not-exempt capital assessment is $242,077, which reflects a 1.59 percent assessment in FY '25. Again, I would characterize the budget in front of you as a level services budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we have any questions or debate, I would ask for a recommendation from the Select Board, please.
The Select Board recommends approval of this article.
And the Regional School Committee?
The Regional School Committee unanimously supports this article.
And may I hear from the Appropriations Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
And finally, from the Financial Planning Committee?
Mr. Moderator, Financial Planning Committee unanimously recommends approving this article.
Thank you. Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on for Article Seven. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation the sum of $15,193,847 for Northborough's share of the assessment for the operation and debt service of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District. This is a majority vote, and the voting has begun. Five more seconds in the vote. And the vote has closed. Article Seven passes. Article Eight, the Asabet Valley Regional Vocational School District Budget. Virginia Sims-George.
Mr. Moderator.
How are you? Good.
I move the town to vote to raise and appropriate by taxation sum of $1,409,186,000 for Northborough's share of the assessment for the operation, debt service of the Asabet Valley Regional Vocational School District. And we have a presentation from Mr. Ernest Hool, who's the superintendent director.
Just one thing I want to correct is the number for the requested appropriation is $1,409,186. Okay, thank you. We are just taking a very quick timeout, and it has nothing to do with Asabet Valley Vocational School District. But it might be Virginia Sims-George.
Do I hear flirting, Mr. Moderator?
Quite possibly.
This is where we stretch the time, right, as we wait? Good evening, and my name is Ernest Hool. I'm the Superintendent Director for Asabet Valley. It's a pleasure once again to come before you to present our FY '25 budget as well as an additional stabilization fund article. This evening, we have obviously our esteemed colleague that serves as your school committee representative and Chair to the Asabet School Committee, Ms. Virginia Sims-George. I also have our Director of Business Operations, Maria Silva, in the audience with us as well. And as we're waiting to pull up our presentation, I would like to say congratulations and kudos to Virginia for her job well done for all of the years in which she's represented Northborough on the school committee and for the numerous amount of years as Chair. And most recently, and she doesn't know I'm going to mention this, but on March 29th, Friday, Virginia was nominated by Representative Kate Donahue for the Black Excellence on the Hill at the State House and was one of 75 awardees that was recognized for her work on the Asabet School Committee, but more so for her leadership in work with civil rights, diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout her career. So I wanted to make sure we recognize her. So without the slides, I'm going to just get started, and then when they bring them up, we'll just jump right in. So Asabet has completed a strategic planning process that will start with a new strategic plan for FY '25. We had a group of about 30 or so individuals that completed that strategic planning process, came up with a new vision, new mission, and will utilize that moving forward as we direct the school district, whether it be budget goals, direction for learning, staying current with industry trends, and making sure that the students of Asabet that attend have all of the options when graduating high school, whether it's to go into college, directly into the workforce, entrepreneurship, into military, or any endeavor in order to make them productive members of a global society. Asabet is known for the secondary education that it provides to students based around the career and technical education component. That's the experiential, hands-on learning that the students receive. They basically go through an exploratory process in the first few months as a freshman where they get to explore each of our 16 career and technical programs that we offer. In a December timeframe, those students then select a career major in which they'll spend three and a half years or 1,800-plus hours of hands-on experiential learning in that career technical field of their choice, which would allow them the opportunity to engage in what we call cooperative work placement where they actually go out and work in industry. They're earning money, they're spending their dollars back in their communities. They also have the ability to earn industry-recognized credentials. So the same type of credentials that you and I as adults would see. Oh, okay, that's fine. Yeah. They're letting me know that it may not be the most current version, but we'll be good. And every time I come, my allergies are starting to act up, so I apologize if I lose my voice. So this was the vision and mission that we mentioned. We are celebrating our 50th year, this year. Whoop, I went too fast. Celebrating our 50th year, we're lucky enough to have a time capsule in the school in which we have one of the shovels that was used in the groundbreaking of the building of the school. If you happen to be by Asabet, we'd love to have you stop by and take a look at that time capsule right in the front entry. Our school, we're known for our secondary education that we provide our high school students, nine through 12. But Asabet is much more, it's a community resource, and that's what your dollars help to fund, and that we also provide post-secondary programming for the practical nursing program, cosmetology, and advanced manufacturing. And just a couple of years back, we created the Asabet Technical Institute, which is a program for adults at night to help with workforce development in the area, to help unemployed or underemployed adults get either back on their feet or get them into a living wage. And of course, many of you have probably engaged with Asabet at the Dark, which is our lifelong and enrichment-type programs. The school district has done well from the standpoint of our designation where we are meeting or exceeding expectations for students who are graduating MCAS before they graduate. We have a special ed population of 25 percent in the district. And I know that, you know, in some of the questions that were raised and you talk about services, 25 percent of those students across the board. However, in our technical programs, that number may be 60 to 70 percent of students with special education services in their career technical field. As I mentioned, we have 16, and it didn't look like it kind of formatted correctly here, but 16 career technical programs, this is what they are. Just quickly, here's a budget snapshot. As I mentioned, we're celebrating 50 years, and we're presenting FY '25 budget and stabilization fund. We have an eight-and-a-half percent overall district increase, all communities over FY '24, and it's a $2,137,140 increase. What I can explain to you is that Asabet builds its budget, and we reverse-engineer that budget. We build our budget based on the amount of revenue of what we're going to be receiving through assessments, and then we build our budget to meet that revenue assessment. So the number may look high at the $2,137,140, but the next slide will explain that to you. That's an addition of 47 in-district students across the board. Of that 47, there was an increase of three students from Northborough, which you can see over FY '24. So the assessment, as it was read, $1,409,186. It's a little bit less than our initial assessment that we had sent back in December, but with the governor's numbers, we are able to bring you to the assessment that's on the motion in the article today. And this brings us to an operation share, enrollment share for Northborough for the district of a 6.6. So when we talk about the 2.1 million increase in the eight-and-a-half percent, this is based on what the Mass Department of Ed in the state has required that we spend as minimum net school spending. So Asabet has always come in with a fiscally responsible budget just above the minimum net school spending. just above the minimum net school spending requirement, which is for us at a hundred percent. We generally come in at a hundred and one, a hundred and two percent. So as you can see, with the increase of the forty-eight students that we had, I think I said forty-seven, I apologize, forty-eight. The increase in Chapter Seventy-eight, based on those forty-eight students, is an increase of $738,035. The increase in the minimum local contribution of what the state is saying that our member communities have to pay has increased by 1.153, $548. And then the regional transportation rate is something that we have available to us. When our school was built, it was promised that regional transportation would be appropriated at a hundred percent, but they added two little words called "if appropriated", and the reimbursement has never been at a hundred percent. It's been anywhere between sixty and eighty percent. Last year, it was about ninety, or this current year, it's ninety-five percent. But in this FY25 budget, we're seeing it at eighty percent. So the total of what the state is saying that we should be getting in funding and then minimum assessments is the 1.8 figure, four forty-seven. So really, the only above piece that we're adding is $251,000, and you'll see that that comes in a capital improvement fund, which is on the next slide. This is what I call the money slide. It might be hard to read. It didn't actually transfer correctly, but the minimum local contribution, Assabett uses the statutory method of assessment, which is the aggregate wealth model. It's based on median wage and then, of course, your property income. It's saying that Northborough's share of that is $1,227,117. On top of that, the regional transportation, the difference of what we're getting, which is a $760,000 reimbursement from the state, there's a delta of $583,296. That amount will be distributed and assessed through each of our seven communities, and Northborough's share of that is $38,352. The OPEB Trust Fund, as we're looking to try and meet what our liability is for OPEB, that has increased from $50,000 to $75,000 this year for FY25, so that's a $4,0931. And then the capital improvement fund is a $250,000 that we've earmarked, $16,438 of that is Northborough's share. The long-term debt service, the $122,348, is a number that was garnered from the renovation project that took place in 2013 that was approved through town budget. The percentage that's applied to that capital debt service payment is for the life of the bond. We're in the ninth year of the capital payment for that. In each year, the payment goes down $55,000, and that decrease gets shared per our seven member communities. And then that brings us to the number of the $1,409,186 for assessment. And that's for the sixty-seven students, as you can see there on the bottom, for a six-point-six percent enrollment share.
Thank you. May I have a recommendation from the Appropriations Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion, debate on Article Eight?
Yeah, once again, His Royal Majesty, Michael A. Leonard, Nigeria, Northborough. You get more with honey than vinegar, so I want to thank Assabett Valley Program. The after-dark programs are wonderful. I support them very well for continuing education and learning skills. I obviously oppose all debt service. I think they all should be repudiated. But with special education, I want to give the educators a thought, okay? And when you say that seventy percent of people are special needs and stuff, okay? Just because somebody thinks outside a Gossian bell curve, okay? And if society's trying to program everyone to think like robots, and in the education system, particularly people in Assabett who aren't cut out to work in a corporate structure, which means they think like robots, and inside that bell curve, okay, does not necessarily mean that they have special needs. However, I will say this, that it is worth helping these people if that money is not going into any Pavillonian conditioning or any kind of neo-skinarian behaviorist brainwashing. So for all you educators, please think about that. Remove that behaviorist paradigm, get rid of it entirely, never, ever fund it, and have a paradigm that's designed more to help develop children's creative thinking abilities rather than training them to be a corporate robot. So please think about that, educators. God bless you.
Any other discussion or debate on, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you over there. Please.
Hi, Catherine Coglager, eighty-nine Howard Street. I disagree with this article. I think it's interesting how, I believe that we have sixty-six people going to Assabett, and Southborough has twenty-five. Southborough is a significantly richer area code, as we can all agree, and they are contributing the least amount of income towards Assabett. As well as something I wanted to touch on, as someone mentioned, that a lot of the percentage of people that come to Assabett through Northborough are special needs, special education. And I think that's interesting because the fact that I don't think our infrastructure here in Northborough supports people with special needs or special education, which is why we have to invest money outwards. And that should not be our plan in Northborough, that we put money into a system that is great. It's great that we have shops. There's nothing, there's not a hierarchy in people who work as a welder versus people who get their BA. I'm autistic, and I have my BA. But I don't think we should set up people with special needs who are autistic, who have ADHD, to say, "Okay, you're those things, so we're going to set you up to go work in welding or to work in shop, because that's what we think that you can only do." And if we do that and we invest in those people's futures, then we're not really supplying them with all their options. And so, but when you look at the actual Assabett population, only twenty percent of people have disabilities, which I believe is a similar number to Algonquin, if I'm correct. So I really don't agree with the fact that we're investing this much money when, again, our counterpart, Southborough, is investing less than half, and they have way more money than we do. As well as, if we're not investing the same kind of curriculum, if we're not investing the same kind of programs and protocols in our own town, why are we expending that to some other place where we're just shipping off people who maybe have disabilities or maybe learn differently? That's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion or debate on Article Eight? Yes, please.
Courtney Jones, two-two-one Ball Street. So I just want to speak about the special education. So I have a child that goes to Assabett, and he has multiple diagnoses. And it isn't necessarily that we ship kids off to Assabett. It's an opportunity. You have to fill out an application. You have to go through an interview process, and then on top of that, it's a lottery, and there's a waiting list to get in. It's a wonderful, wonderful place. So I'm in total support of this article, and I really hope it passes. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Oh, my turn. Hi, Heather Behr, Sixth Clutch Circle. I just wanted to address this in the sense that, as the previous speaker mentioned, I do have two children with a myriad of diagnoses and are considered complex learners, and Northborough at times struggles to provide appropriate services for them. One thing that gives me pause in regards to this vote is looking at the actual slots that are available. If, and I hope I'm wrong, but I did watch the entire lottery with bated breath. I believe Northborough has eighteen. I don't remember the exact number. I may have blocked it out. But there's a limited amount of slots. There is a waiting list, as someone has mentioned. It is very difficult to get into the tech school. But looking at what options are there for learners, whether neurotypical or neurodiverse or whatever, you know, without the labels, where Algonquin is not meeting those needs and access to Assabett is not available. You know, there are parents that are needing to pull their children out of district and pay private school tuition or, you know, find family members that may live in another technical school sending district. And I think that there is a lot of question, and I know there has been a large amount of discussion about this, especially when we look at learners in eighth grade rising to ninth grade that have been impacted by the effects of the pandemic and their social-emotional learning has been stunted as well. So I would like people to take that into account as they consider this vote. I think that the programming provided at Assabett is incredible. However, I wish that, if anything, we were taking a vote to increase, you know, the availability for our students in Northborough. So, thank you.
Any other discussion, debate? Okay.
I'll speak more slowly this time. This is Michael A. Leonard, once again. Just another idea about education. Remember, ideas and how we think and paradigms are very important. But let's remove the idea from our head that education is job training. Let's remove that, we're not robots. We're not preparing the kids for something. We're building kids' ability to creatively think. And in that case, that makes them better, more free citizens and more productive than just training them for a certain job. So there's a million ways we can think about special education, and each kid is unique and creative, okay? But let's just remove that idea from our head, okay? Education is not job training. That is a fallacy of the last fifty years of education due to the rise of the financial and corporate economy. Let's just remove that idea from our head. And any educators who want to talk to me about this, I would be more than glad to talk to you. Thank you.
Okay, we are on Article Eight. Hearing no further discussion or debate. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation the sum of $1,409,186 for Northborough's share of the assessment for the operation and debt service of the Assabett Valley Regional Vocational School District. The voting is open. Okay, five more seconds. And the voting is closed. Article Eight passes. Article Nine. Establishment of Stabilization Fund by Assabett Valley Regional Vocational School District. Virginia Sims George.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve the Assabett Valley Regional Vocational Technical School Committee's vote on January ninth, 2024, to establish a stabilization fund for the Assabett Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District pursuant to Section sixteen G and a half of Chapter Seventy-one of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Superintendent Hul?
So the Assabett School Committee, this year, as I mentioned, we have forty-eight additional in-district students. The school committee has taken upon themselves to present this stabilization article as a preemptive way and proactive way in order for the district to secure a capital fund that would go on from year to year based on the requirements of what Mass General Law Seventy-one, Section sixteen G and a half allow. The purpose of this fund is that in the past fifty years of existence that Assabett has been in play, and this may actually answer a few of the questions or comments that were made just a few minutes ago, Assabett has never had a completely full class of freshmen that were all in-district. When I started at Assabett in 2015, we would probably get about a hundred and sixty-seven, a hundred and sixty-nine applications of freshmen from our in-district communities. The remainder of the two-hundred-and-seventy-five students that we would take would come from out-of-district communities. In all of those years up to 2015, Assabett has had the ability to rely on out-of-district tuition funding from those out-of-district tuition students. Shrewsbury, Clinton, West Boylston, Lester, Lemonster. There were a number of students. So for the past two years, we've seen that number decrease. In my conversations with FinComs and appropriation committees over the past four or five years, we've been kind of promoting that we're seeing this trend happening. So when it comes to the application process, we're seeing upwards of six-hundred applications for three-hundred spots at Assabett. What I'm proud to say is that about four-hundred-and-fifty-seven of those applications are coming from our in-district communities, which tells me that we're doing something right. The remainder of those are coming from out-of-district communities. However, what happens is there's some cost shifting that's happening, as you can see with the budget, with that increase that was just voted, and thank you very much for supporting us. The stabilization fund, though, where we get to a point where we're now have a dwindling ability to access out-of-district money to handle capital equipment costs and capital improvement costs. The renovation project that took place and was voted in 2013, that completed in 2016, was the first major renovation project that Assabett has come to its communities since the building was built. It was throughout that forty-five-year timeframe, or forty-year timeframe, that we've been able to handle capital improvements and capital equipment costs through out-of-district tuition revenue. We no longer have that as a sustainable funding source. In addition to that, we also aggressively, just like I'm sure my colleague at your comprehensive school district, seek out grant funding. But again, it's competitive grant funding, and it's not always a guarantee. So the renovation project, as well as it went for sixty-two million, we had MSBA that was reimbursement, fifty-three percent. We basically, it was twenty-seven million that ended up being part of a bond that the communities are now paying down. That's over the, will be finished in 2042. But the renovation project didn't assess or address all of the issues within the district. It also doesn't address the capital equipment of larger industrial-type equipment that our school district delivery model require. This capital equipment that we'd be seeking to purchase through this capital improvement plan would be equipment that costs at a minimum of $25,000 or more and would have a lifespan of at least ten years or more. It's not, when I talk in hand tools and things of that nature. So that's what that would look at. It would look at making sure that whether our infrastructure within the building, you know, the flooring that's fifty years old, that's popping up, that may have mastic in it that may need to be replaced, and having a proactive, preemptive measure. We're also making sure that if there was anything catastrophic or life safety that would have to happen, that we don't have to come back to the communities with all of a sudden this bill for five-hundred, six-hundred thousand because this thing just... because this thing just happened. It would be nice to have a rainy day account, and I have listed all the stabilization funds from our seven communities that have all established stabilization funds, but as the regional school district, we don't have the ability to access those funds. So part of the purpose of this is that the committee would be looking to establish this, it would be able to roll over year after year. The intent is to have no more than 5% of what our previous year's budget is in that account. So for example, if we had a $25 million budget, the total in that account that we'd be looking at a max would be a 1.25 million. Obviously, that's not getting assessed in a one-year shot. Like we have in the budget that you just passed, it's a $250,000 investment at the time, and Northborough's percentage of that was $16,438.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion, debate on Article Nine? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. Whoa, wait, wait, wait. I want your input. And you want, and you want to give it, all right? The Appropriations Committee, may I get your recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Appropriations Committee was split three to three on their vote to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you. Okay, for Article Nine, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to approve the Assabette Valley Regional Vocational Technical School Committee's vote on January 9, 2024, to establish a stabilization fund for the Assabette Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District pursuant to Section 16G and a half of Chapter 71 of the Massachusetts General Laws. This is a majority vote, and the vote has been opened. Okay, five more seconds in the vote. And the vote is closed. Article Nine passes. Article Ten, Revolving Funds Authorization of Expenditure Limits. Chairman Cohen, please.
Evening, everyone. Mitch Cohen, Chair of the Northborough Select Board. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize revolving fund annual expenditure limits for fiscal year 2025 as shown in the table in the warrant and the warrant supplement distributed at this town meeting.
May I have a second? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded, and the presentation will be by Jason Little, our financial director.
Thank you. The town is authorized to have what are called revolving funds, and what those are, are certain departments have, will have a fund whereby they charge a user fee for a voluntary service, and the fees from that service go into a fund, and the department is allowed to expend those funds without further appropriation. These funds are promulgated by bylaws, and this is, could be viewed as a housekeeping article. And there's, in total, I should go back up and say there's seven of these funds, and they're located on page 10 of the warrant book.
Thank you. May I hear from the Appropriations Committee on Article Ten, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion, or debate on Article Ten?
My name is, excuse me, my name is Charles Hurikin. I live at 125 Howard Street. My question is, I know the town is talking about combining the Health Department and the Family and Youth Services Office into one department. Can you tell me what, if that does pass, what the effect of these revolving funds would be?
Through the moderator. The Health Department does have a revolving fund authorized under town bylaws. There is a limit in this article, but that wouldn't be affected by the reorganization.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion, or debate on Article Ten? So this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to authorize revolving fund annual expenditure limits for fiscal year 2025 as shown in the table in the warrant and the warrant supplement distributed at this town meeting. And the vote, voting is open. Okay, voting will close in five seconds. And the voting is closed. Article Ten passes. Article Eleven, Appropriations Committee Reserve Fund.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $175,000 from free cash to the reserve fund to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures.
Motion has been made and seconded. Director Little, please.
Annually, an article is put before you to vote on a reserve fund for the Appropriations Committee. The Appropriations Committee Reserve Fund is a remedy for, if a department has extraordinary or unforeseen expenses. Having this fund and this mechanism is a remedy for avoiding unforeseen and unneeded town meeting, town, special town meetings. And generally, this fund is used to cover additional snow and ice expenses at the end of the year so that the deficit from snow and ice isn't carried forward to the following year.
Thank you. May I hear from Appropriations, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommended approval of this article.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion, or debate on Article Eleven? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. I'm, we have one.
I'm Rodiger Volk, 137 East Main Street. Just a small comment only. If I have here the audience in front of me, can we change the terms free cash into another term? Because that makes the voter, I think, more aware that this is tax money. Thank you.
Director Little, are you clear on that?
Through the moderator. I'm not sure I understood the question.
Okay. Can we get more definition on the question, please?
Yeah, thank you. I made only a comment about the term which happened here tonight, probably very often, the term free cash. There is no free cash. So if, my, my point is only if the, if the government can change the term for the next, for next year also to eliminate the term free cash and find another term for this, because that makes it more understandable.
All right. You have been recognized. You have to come to the microphone if you are going to comment, okay? Director Little.
Through the moderator. Free cash is a, is a definition that's determined by the state, and I don't believe that it would be practical for us to change the terminology. It's required on our state reports and so forth. So it's not one that we've defined locally here. It's something that's used throughout the Commonwealth.
Any other discussion, questions, debate? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on for Article Eleven. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $175,000 from free cash to the reserve fund to provide for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures, and the voting is open. Five more seconds in the voting. And the voting is closed. Article Eleven passes. Article Twelve, Adoption of Provisions of Building Rental Fund for Four West Main Street. Chair Cohen.
Moderator, if you can indulge me for a brief moment, the, the conclusion of the last article essentially concludes the first phase of what I look at as our town meeting articles, where our, most of our annual town meeting appropriations and other issues have now been resolved, and that's a really good, a really good step in the town meeting. And I want to particularly thank two members who have spoken a number of times already this evening, our new town administrator, Tim McInerney, and our town finance director, Jason Little. Town budget process usually begins in September or October, and it certainly is full steam into November. As many of you know, we had no town administrator at that time. We also had no finance director because Jason briefly entered the waters of working for another town. Luckily, by the second week of December, we had hired Tim McInerney, and he convinced Jason to come back to Northborough, and we were able to put together the budget in much less time. So I want to thank the two of them for working very, very hard, as well as all of our staff who I see up towards the front, to get to where we are today. So thank you, everyone. And now, I move the town vote to adopt the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Three, which allows for the balances of rental receipts remaining at the end of a fiscal year in the Building Rental Fund established for Four West Main Street to remain in the fund, to be expended without further appropriation for the upkeep and maintenance of the building.
Motion has been made and seconded. Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator, this is very self-explanatory. If anybody has questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, I won't waste your time.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. I do support Article Twelve with the comment that I'm generally against the town being a landlord, whether commercial or residential. So I would encourage the town eventually to dispose of any property that it wishes to be a landlord for, because I don't think that's the best use of town resources. We are where we are with this property, so I support this article in spending the money we're getting for it for these purposes, but I'm against us being a landlord in general. Thank you.
Yes, over here.
David Fornier, 283 Davis Street. If we adopt Chapter Forty, Section Three for Article Twelve, will we also adopt it for Articles Thirty-three, Thirty-four, and Thirty-five? Thank you.
If you may.
I have to look at what those articles are. I don't know that I have, but it would be, thanks.
So this is, this is in regard for rental, rental income. So you're, you're asking us to approve rental income for the roofs of the three schools for solar panel installation. So the question is, if we, if we adopt this for that purpose, do we also adopt it for those three articles? Thank you.
No, you would not. Not them for the same. It's a separate power purchase agreement made with the schools and our vendor for providing solar panels. So it would not be the same.
May I ask the Appropriations Committee to weigh in on Article Twelve?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any other discussions, questions, or debate on Article Twelve?
Yeah, I'm just curious where Four West Main Street is. Someone was telling me it's the Town Hall, but wouldn't the Town Hall be on Main Street? West Main Street's near Romeins. So what building we're referring to here? Yeah, Michael Leonard, Nijun Brook Road.
Connor Blake Street? Blake Street? Right at that corner of Blake Street? That's the CVS?
Oh, okay. Oh, so this is the building. Oh, oh, right in the center of town, that massive, okay. So, but isn't that Main Street? Isn't West Main Street near Romeins? Is this just a typo? I'm just curious.
No, it's Four West Main. I think it splits right there.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, debate? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on for Article Twelve. I move the town vote to adopt the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Three, which allows for the balances, balances of rental receipts remaining at the end of the fiscal year in the Building Rental Fund established for the Four West Main Street to remain in the fund, to be expended without further appropriation for the upkeep and maintenance of the building. Voting is open. Five more seconds on the voting. And the voting is closed. Article Twelve passes. Article Thirteen, Stabilization, Stabilization Fund Contribution. Chairman Cohen?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash to the Stabilization Fund for transfer in fiscal year 2024.
Motion's been made and seconded. Director Little, please.
Thank you again. The, the town has a reserve policy that contemplates the stabilization and free cash as being what comprises the town's reserves. As you saw with our budget presentation, our reserves are being maintained at 8%. This transfer, which is being proposed for $200,000 to move from free cash to free, to stabilization, it could be kind of described as being akin to, in your personal life, moving money from your checking to your savings account. This article would help us maintain our reserves at 8%, and would also demonstrate to the bond rating agencies when we go out and we, we enter the tax exempt debt market annually. bond rating agencies when we go out and we enter the tax-exempt debt market annually, and this would help us preserve our bond rating.
Thank you. May I hear on the recommendation from the Appropriations Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this
Any discussion, debate on Article 13, please. Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund for transfer in fiscal year 2024. Okay, five more seconds on the vote. And the vote is closed. Article 13 passes. Article 14, Senior Tax Relief.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Section 5(c)(1/2) of Chapter 59 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the purpose of allowing a real estate tax exemption up to 100% for all persons who qualify for property tax exemptions under the clauses listed on the first paragraph of Section 5 of Chapter 59, and to increase the maximum qualifying gross receipts that seniors, persons 65 or older, may have in the prior calendar year to be eligible to defer property taxes under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, to $69,000, and to adjust the exemption authorized under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K, concerning the so-called Senior Work-Off Program, under which seniors may reduce their property tax liability in exchange for services provided to the town by allowing the maximum reduction of the real estate property tax bill to be based on 125 volunteer service hours in a given tax year rather than the statutory dollar amount of $2,000 or whichever is more.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Director Little, please.
All right, thank you. This table here, I know it's not legible, but I put it up here just for the purposes of displaying that there's various senior tax exemptions that are available to people with disabilities and elderly and veterans and disabled folks. These, this list of exemptions and property tax relief programs can be accessed from the Assessor's webpage, and what we're talking about tonight is altering some of these programs to maximize them. A couple of years ago, the mandate was given to the Finance Department and the Outreach Departments to research and look into any available legislative ability to give tax relief to residents. And the result of that was an article last year. There's likely going to be an article every year that adjusts some of the limits that are available to people under these programs. So annually, there will likely be an article for this. Last year, the, these are the three elements. If you notice, the motion was fairly long because there's three proposed elements to this. There's one that's going to double exemptions, or potentially double some exemptions, change the deferral income, tax deferral income limits, and alter some of the work-off program criteria. The, last year, the article was solely focused on deferral income limits, and in the future, it may solely be that again in the future. So under Article 14, the doubling exemptions is pursuant to Chapter 59, Section 5(c)(1/2). So it allows the exemptions that were listed on that first page in that table to effectively be doubled with certain caveats. They will not be doubled in the first year. There is a unique calculation that has to happen through each one of them, so they won't automatically be, for each taxpayer, be doubled. But there is a provision for them to potentially double over time. The exemptions here are funded from the town's overlay. So the second aspect of this article is adjusting the deferral income limit pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, Clause 41A. This, in effect, is similar to reverse mortgage where somebody can defer paying taxes, and they pay a much lower interest rate up until their estate settles the tax bill at the end. So this aspect of this article is intended to increase the income limits available to folks to the maximum that's allowed by law, which is the senior circuit breaker. And then the third aspect of this is adopting a local option voted on by town, that would require town meeting vote, to increase the individual limit that people can participate in this program for to 125 hours or $2,000, whichever is more.
Thank you. May I hear from the Select Board with their recommendation on Article 14?
The Select Board is always looking for ways to offset the tax impact to seniors, and we do everything we can to find all available laws where we can adopt. So as Jason said, I expect that annually, as the state gives us more tools and adjusts the income limits, we will do the same, and therefore recommends article approval. Thank you.
And may I hear from the Appropriations Committee, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of the auto article.
Okay. Any questions, debate, or discussion on Article 14? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to accept Section 5(c)(1/2) of Chapter 59 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the purpose of allowing real estate tax exemption up to 100% for all persons who qualify for property tax exemptions under clauses listed in the first paragraph of Section 5 of Chapter 59, and to increase the maximum qualifying gross receipts that seniors, persons 65 or older, may have in the prior calendar year to be eligible to defer property taxes under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, to $69,000, and to adjust the exemption authorized under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K, concerning the so-called Senior Work-Off Program, under which seniors may reduce their property tax liability in exchange for services provided to the town by allowing the maximum reduction of the real estate property tax bill to be based on 125, 125 volunteer service hours in a given tax year rather than the statutory dollar amount of $2,000 or whichever is more. I see that the voting is in, and you all have been busy while I was reading. And the voting is closed. Article 14 passes. Article 15, Appropriation of Funds for Legal Settlement for Marlborough Sewer Case. Chair Cohen.
I'll be reading from the blue insert in the packet that you received on your way in. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of up to $7,619,607 for payment towards the settlement of the sewer case, sewer use fee litigation with the City of Marlborough in Worcester Superior Court, Civil Action Number 1685-CV01772, subject to the execution of appropriate releases and a settlement agreement with the city, and the execution of an intermunicipal agreement with the city for shared wastewater services at the Westerly Plant for the maximum period allowed by law, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of up to $7,619,607 be transferred from Sewer Enterprise Free Cash.
Second.
Is there a second? Administrator McInerney, please.
Good evening again. Excuse me. As people may know, we've, all of our wastewater goes to the City of Marlborough. In 2010, our IMA intermunicipal agreement expired, and in 2015, they arbitrarily and capriciously started to charge us a rate that was way beyond the original IMA. So we ended up in litigation. The chairman just read the litigation piece. When we put this article together, it was more of a placeholder in hopes of getting some traction with a newly-elected mayor, and of course, I was new in December. So we started to have the conversation about settling this. I will tell you, from 2015 until now, you've been charging a higher rate and been collecting a higher rate in anticipation of this settlement or this judgment coming. A special master was initiated by the court to do some math on numbers for our past use, and it included interest that we would refute in any given day because it's, the court has a standard 12% that they just issue against judgments, and 12% for municipals is unheard of in terms of us earning that kind of money on interest. Ours has been like around 1% up until recently. I'm going to rely a little bit on Scott Chapantier because he has been with this almost from the beginning. But the long intro, it is, up until today, we thought we were going to pass over this article. And we have three items in the IMA, this intermunicipal agreement, that we want to get done with the city so we can pay the bill that we're rightly owed to the city, but we want it to be fair, and we want to have a long-term IMA. So this is contingent upon a successful negotiation of the IMA. I hope to use this article, if it were to pass, as leverage to get the city to, A, take the settlement as discussed, and has to have an IMA that's beneficial to the community of Northborough. If you have technical questions on it, Scott will be right up here with me. So I'm here for questions that the body may have. Come on.
Before Scott answers all the questions, I'm going to ask the Select Board to give a recommendation on Article 15, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Select Board very much definitely recommends approval of this article as the best way to pay what we know we will eventually have to pay anyway. Thank you.
And may I hear from the Appropriations Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, based on the updated information, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. There's a question right here.
Thank you. Fran Backstrand, 76 Cedar Hill Road. Just a point of clarification. I've never seen an article where, when we're looking to appropriate, we appropriate funds, we say a sum up to. We have a set dollar amount, and if it doesn't come to that, you know, we don't spend it. But why is it, why in this case is it up to the $7 million?
Mr. Moderator, we wanted flexibility when we have these discussions with the city to go up to the amount that the special master has presented as a number. We'd like it to be lower, obviously, to keep the fund balance. I should mention this, the fund balance in this account, because you've been paying sewer fees for 12 years, 15 years, has been accumulating, so there'll still be a balance in there of 529, $529,000.
Okay, all right, thank you. But just a follow-up. Aren't we showing our hand by showing exactly what we will, you know, we'll negotiate up to? I mean, why would they say lower? They already know we're going, we'd go as high as the $7,600,000.
That's, that's been the discussion we had with the legal team up till 4 o'clock this afternoon, so we went back and forth. This is the worst-case scenario that we believe we would accept from the special master's ruling. If it was more than this, we would appeal it and continue to appeal it. So we just need some leverage to say we are up to this amount. We may end up paying the full amount.
All right, thank you.
Yes, over here, please.
Yes, Michael Leonard, Nine Juniper Brook Road, North from Massachusetts. Listen, we have a lot of creative, highly-educated people in this town. Their population is about 14,000, if not more, light of assessment. Please give me a reason why we can't create our own wastewater plant with all this money in this nonsensical litigation in court, wasting all this money for nothing, okay? And build our own wastewater. We can, we can do it if we're creative enough. We have enough creative people, we have enough engineers, we can do it. We don't have to be dependent on other towns or agreements or litigations, so let's really, really think about it. Second of all, I want to remind you that if you do collect interest on loans, you are going to Lake of Fire, so please remember that. I know most of you don't believe that, but on the day of judgment, we'll see what happens, so God bless.
Over here, please.
Mr. Moderator, Chris Woodcock, 18 Increase Ward Drive. Having worked on this with the town's legal team for over 15 years, this is an amazing deal for the town of Northborough. Anybody who votes against this is making a huge mistake. Town, the City of Northborough is looking at three times this amount from the town, more than three times this amount. We don't have another option. The state and federal government will not allow us to build our own treatment plant. And even if they would, it would cost us millions and millions of dollars. This is a phenomenal deal.
Any other discussion? Over here, please.
Yeah, Rudiger Volk, 137 East Main Street. Thank you very much for the enlightenment of the effort and the relationship of this amount and what we should, maybe pay. My question is, is this amount and all, would the cost which you apply for the customer as who is on the sewer system of Northborough or Marlborough? Would this is covered by these customers or is it a general taxpayer fund which covers part of the cost of the sewer system? Could you answer me this question or ask?
I can. Mr. Moderator, just to go back to this word of free cash, this is fund balance inside of this particular enterprise fund, and these were receipts already collected, we held in reserve, held in that account as free cash, as reserves, for this particular purpose. And under Mass. General Law, any enterprise fund has to be self-supporting, and to pay this judgment would have to come from those funds to maintain and be consistent with that law.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Jason Perro, 27 Tree Top Circle. Can you just comment briefly? From my understanding, this dollar amount represents both operational costs that we might be on the hook for over these period of years, but also some of the capital costs when the plant was renovated or expanded back in 2010-ish timeframe?
Scott Chapantier, Public Works Director. That's correct. This includes both operation and maintenance costs dating back to the original arbitrary and capricious bills that they sent out in 2015. It also includes the debt service associated with the treatment plan expansion that was done in 2008. These funds, excuse me, have been collected by, from the ratepayers throughout these years with the expectation that we will end up having a settlement or a judgment. As Tim indicated, those funds are in our retained earnings and are allocated specifically there for a settlement or a judgment. So yes, it does include both operating and debt service.
Any other questions on Article 15? Hearing none. This is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $7,619,000, $19,607 for payment toward the settlement of the sewer use fee litigation with the City of Marlborough in Worcester Superior Court, Civil Action Number 1685-CV01772, subject to the execution of appropriate releases, a settlement agreement with the city, and the execution of an intermunicipal agreement with the city for shared wastewater services at the Westerly Plant for the maximum period allowed by law, and to meet said appropriations, the sum of $7,619,607 be transferred from Sewer Enterprise Free Cash. The vote is open. The vote is open. And the vote is closed. Article 15 passes. Article 16, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $140,000 for the use of the police department for the purchase of two new police vehicles. And to meet said appropriation, the sum of $140,000 to be transferred from free cash for expenditure in fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Chief Griffin?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Griffin, and it's my honor to be your police chief. And it's also an honor to follow the sewer discussion. The Northborough Police Department is seeking approval for the replacement of two police cruisers. We are requesting $140,000 to acquire an outfit to 2024 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles. This cost encompasses the conversion of these vehicles into emergency units, which includes installation of lights, sirens, detainee transport protection, graphics, computers, radar, and much more. Our department operates on a 10-year replacement schedule, which has proven effective managing our fleet efficiently. Each year, depending on the schedule, we request funding for the replacement of either two or three vehicles. This is a two-vehicle year. Typically, patrol vehicles are traded in after four years of service or 100,000 miles, while administrative vehicles are replaced every six to eight years or 100,000 miles. It is crucial to adhere to this schedule to ensure that our fleet remains reliable and adequately equipped for the demands of police work. I thank you for your support and consideration.
Thank you. May I hear from the Appropriations Committee on Article 16, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
And may I hear from the Financial Planning Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, Financial Planning Committee unanimously approves Article 16.
Thank you. Are there any questions, concerns, issues on Article 16? Yes, right over here.
Mr. Moderator, Jacob Jones, 106 Green Street. I support our police, I support our fire, I support our Department of Public Works. I'm perhaps the unfortunate one to volunteer and stand up to make a point that may be made in the future. I am in disagreement with the replacement schedules that we have for the fire department, for the police department, and for the Department of Public Works for our vehicle fleet. And for that reason, I am going to be unfortunately not supporting each of those articles. I won't stand up each time, I'll just say that one time. I would like to know what happens to our vehicles in the police fleet that are four years old and therefore not deemed adequate for our town to use. I'd like to know what happens to them. Secondly, I think most of the town people can appreciate that most vehicles are good to use for more than four years. And, and I think that my final comment would be, I supported the article, I'm sorry, I don't know if this is my.
Yeah, they're working on it.
I'll try to talk loudly. There you go. I supported the article to assist the tax burden on our over-65 residents. But doing so also unfortunately increases the tax burden naturally on those who aren't over 65, some of which can't be here because as a result of sometimes being younger, you've got children at home. My wife isn't here, can't vote because, amen, you've got children at home. And so I'm, nothing against those who can come here, I'm glad we're all here. But because I do support assistance for those with fixed incomes and debt, I would also ask the town to support those who are younger and putting more of the tax burden to be sensitive of the tax burden that we're putting on ourselves. And so while it is, I absolutely support these departments and the work that they do, I ask that we reconsider the replacement cycle for our vehicles. And because of that, I'm going to respectfully not support these articles. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, thank you. I understand your point about it does seem 100,000 miles in four years does not seem like a lot. Most people probably wouldn't churn in their vehicles at that young of an age. These are emergency vehicles that are operating sometimes upwards of 16 hours a day, 365 days a year. These vehicles take a lot of beating. And our officers drive very carefully. But just the general everyday driving around in all different climates, we feel, and studies have shown, that at that lifespan for an emergency vehicle, it's the appropriate time to churn it in. They say with the idle time, now, we might be operating at 16 hours a day in one vehicle. And that's, you know, there is a lot of idle time on those engines, which they say adds about 30% to your mileage. So added to about 130,000. At that point, we're starting to see mechanical issues breaking down. There's a lot of wiring issues. And we feel, and my counterparts in neighboring towns, we feel it's best to start trading them in at that. We do trade them back into the, to the vendor who we buy them from. That's where they go after that. I don't know where they go. I don't know who would want to buy an old police car. Some people do. But we do trade them in and we get a small trade-in value for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Jeff Emerson, 60 Green Street. When we have these kinds of articles, you know, I tend to look at this kind of, you know, when I do, when I need to talk to any expert. If my car doesn't work right, I used to take it to the Wolf's down in town. And if he told me I needed a starter, I'd put a starter in it. If I go to the doctor, he tells me I need to take XYZ, generally, I'm going to take it because they know more than we do. We're really lucky in this town that we have an excellent police department, fire department, public safety in general. They do a great job for us. In fact, I read recently that Northborough was apparently voted, or however they do it, as the safest town in Massachusetts. Okay? That, that doesn't just happen. That's not random. It's because we have a great leadership team and great people, you know, running the show for us. So, you know, why don't we follow their lead? They know more about this than we do. You know, let's just support this and get on with life.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Yeah. I'm Rudiger Volk again. Yes, I miss a little bit transparency of your vehicles. I was yesterday, for example, at the police station, I saw eight vehicles outside and I think there were only two people or three people as a staff member in it. So what is the excess of amount of cars which you have? So I don't see the, could be the enrollment of new cars be extended, so of four or five years? So.
Yeah, we do, we've been, we do, in recent years, we've been keeping like two extra vehicles as backup when we do have an issue with mechanical issues. And unfortunately, some of the vehicles we've been purchasing develop mechanical issues. Again, there is a lot of wiring that goes into these. And therefore, we do keep two extra vehicles for backup purposes, if we really needed them. If our vehicles go out to the shop, they could be out there for three to five days and we can't be without those cars. So we do keep a couple extras as backup. And also, we have administrative vehicles too. Detectives have vehicles. So, you know, that's, that's our fleet.
Over here, please.
Hi. Carter Brandon, 22 Sherland Drive. I was just curious if you had any more details on the kinds of vehicles that are being retired and the kinds of vehicles that are, you're looking to purchase.
Yeah, that's, it's a good question. Thank you. We're replacing a 2018 Ford Explorer, which is also known as a Police Interceptor Utility. Most people would call it an Explorer, but what you see up here is called a Police Interceptor Utility. Most people would call it an Explorer. It's just a little different than your average Explorer. It's pursuit rated, there's a few extra features. So we're trading in a 2018 with 106,000 miles and a 2019 Dodge Charger. As your new police chief, I'm getting away from Dodge Chargers and Chevy Tahos. We're going to go with one uniform police car. We still may keep the Chevy Tahos for administrative purposes and for our supervisor's vehicle because those are the largest and our supervisor vehicle operates as a command vehicle for major incidents. So going forward, you're going to see mostly these out on the streets. Currently, we have four hybrid vehicles, and those are the best. The officers love driving the hybrids. I'm hoping I can get hybrids if this gets approved. The unfortunate thing is, everybody wants them right now and the wait time is upwards of a year and a half, I've been told. So these two purchases, I'm just being very transparent, may be gas. I'm all in favor of hybrid and I would like to get them. It's just I cannot wait a year and a half. And I'm also in discussion with National Grid's fleet program about electric. I don't see electric vehicles, electric police cars coming in the next year or two, but I could see us using an electric vehicle for an administrative vehicle. And that's why I'm in discussion. I've had multiple meetings with National Grid. They have a program about that and I'm all for bringing an electric vehicle to the police department.
Thank you.
Over on this aisle, please.
Yes, Michael A. Leonard, 9 Jupiter Brook Road. Brian, I love you very much. You know, you're great to my late father. God bless you and everything you've done for me as a Little League baseball coach and football coach. You're a wonderful asset to this community.
Thanks, Mike.
I want to suggest a few things. Number one, okay, $140,000 for a police car for all electronics. I think a lot of this is government surveillance, to be quite honest. It's all this unnecessary computer, we need more details. No, I'm serious. Like, let's think about this. Okay? Secondly, that, but yes, $140,000 could be going to building infrastructure, to building, you know, you know, this waste treatment plant, to having a bank, you know, like, instead of updating these police vehicles, like, Brian, let me, let's go back to the old days when it was community policing, right? We don't need to militarize the police. We'd have good community policing, not just having all these expensive upgrades of technology. God knows what the government is doing with this stuff. But yeah, I don't trust any of these computers, this high-tech stuff. But, and secondly, if, allow me, there's non-entropic free energy. There's zero-point energy. And these engineers know that. We don't need to, we can power if we're smart enough in our, you know, engineering people start thinking, so, you know, about energy efficiency. But, but yeah, I don't trust where, $140,000 for a vehicle, no way. No, no way. That's, there's way more things that money can go to. But, but I recommend that you, you know, consider, because you're a great man, you grew up in the police department. But we go back to that community policing, the old-school way, and that we don't have all these expensive upgrades. And it's just not the police department. We need the nice stuff for the schools, the nice stuff. We don't need any of this stuff, it's a waste of money. Let's invest this money in substantial things such as housing and infrastructure and watch the town transform entirely.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, certainly you may.
Mike, thank you for the nice comments, Mike. And, yep, thank you. I'm a firm believer of community policing, Mike. And you'll see my officers out there on foot, walking around. Unfortunately, with the cost of many things, this is just what the cost is today. I gave the story to the committee behind me about my, my own family purchasing a minivan this year. And I was blown away as to the cost of a Honda Odyssey. You would have thought I was driving a Lamborghini. So unfortunately, it's just the cost of things today. But community policing, Mike, I'm a firm believer in.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Bilal Hamaidan, 15 Edmunds Way. Just had a question about the hybrids. You've been using them already. Have you noticed any, like, are they lasting longer, better mileage? Do you think they would change over the next couple of years, the way you guys do your purchasing?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And they're still relatively new to us. I think our newest one is a 2002, I believe. So I think, you know, at, towards the end of that lifetime, I'd like to see that. And we'll definitely analyze that. And as the gentleman suggested about our replacement schedule, if, if we see that there is, hey, these are, these are lasting longer, then yeah, we won't be asking for those. We'll look at that when we look at the replacement schedule. But it's a great point and it's just too early to tell because they're too new to us. But we love them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And over here, please.
Hi. Jorge Ruiz, 268 Whitney Street. I'm just rising to support the two patrol vehicles for $140,000. That is the cost of the patrol vehicle, $70,000 apiece. This is their office, we should support our police. They drive these things 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I would hope that they would be able to show up with four tires and a car. Think about sitting in a car for eight hours, 16 hours, you would want it to be decent. This is what these officers, who are doing the job, do for us and we should do for them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is one more person in the.
Yes. Janet Robbins, 44 Brigham. Let's get the officers their car. It's, cars, there's two cars. That's $70,000 per car. It's a good deal. Let's support the police. You'll make the money of having the safest town in Massachusetts up in the value of your house.
All right. For Article 16, this is what we're voting on. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $140,000 for the use of the police department for the purchase of two new police vehicles. And to meet said appropriation, the sum of $140,000 be transferred from free cash for expenditure in fiscal year 2024. And the voting is closed. Article 16 passes. Article 17, CIP Fire Rescue, one replacement.
I move the town vote to appropriate $1,250,000 for the purchase of a new rescue truck for the fire department. And to meet this appropriation, $492,920 shall be transferred from free cash, $11,238 shall be transferred from premium reserve, and $745,842 shall be raised by borrowing in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any enabling, any other enabling authority and their treasurer with the approval of the Select Board shall be authorized to issue bonds or notes therefore.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Presentation by Chief Parenti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, as the slide says, we're replacing our 2004 rescue pumper, which was originally purchased to do multiple tasks, it's overloaded, it's overtasked, we have, as our mission keeps changing, as we're expected to do more and more, we keep putting more and more equipment on there, and it's time to replace the truck, it was originally planned to be replaced in 2004, we, I'm sorry, last year, or this year, we had to push it out because we had to replace Engine One last year because we had a pump problem, so as I stood in front of you last year and I said, prices of fire trucks are going up, guys, and I don't know what I can do about it, 1.25 million for a rescue, I also sat in front of you last year and said, you know, the other issue we're running into is how long it's taking us to get these fire trucks, and when we ordered Engine One, we were told maybe 24 months, we're now being told upwards of 48 months for the rescue, so that makes a truck that was supposed to be replaced in 2024 being replaced sometime in '29 or '30, depending on when it comes in, and we don't know, it could be sooner, but we're working on that, the total price of 1.25 million, as a select person, Wix, had pointed out, $492,920 is from free cash, $11,238 is being transferred from premium reserve, so that's $504,158 that does not need to be raised by taxes, the balance of $745,842 will need to be borrowed, and we ask for your support, thank you.
Thank you, may I ask for the recommendation from the Appropriations Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Okay, and may I hear from the Financial Planning Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee also unanimously approves, recommends approving this Article 17.
Thank you, any questions, concerns on Article 17?
Yes, my name is Rudi Gavorki again, the transparency is not very clear to me, but the one thing is boring, so for how much percentage is it, you mentioned that, that a year ago, you proposed it, and you had a pump problem, what was the cost, what was the increase of the truck from last year to this year, and what would be the proposed, projected increase of truck when we delay it for another year?
Right, so last year, we got an engine for $900,000, this year, we're getting a rescue for, or asking for a rescue for 1.25 million, what the increase is gonna be, I can't tell you, I can tell you that we keep being told by our suppliers that lock in your price as soon as you can, because every time EPA comes out with a change, the motor changes, when the motor changes, the engineering changes, when the engineering changes, the truck goes up by 50 to $100,000.
Sorry, for the next, another question is, did you reconsider, or did you consider renovation of the truck, is this possible, and what would be the, if you trade this in, what would, what cost would you get back, I mean, sorry, not cost, but what money would you get back when you trade this in?
So, as far as a renou, no, we didn't, once you, when you start renovating trucks that are 20, 20-plus years old, it's sort of like when you own a house and you say, I'm just gonna replace one wall, once you rip that wall open, what do you find, two-by-fours with bark still on it and knobbing tube wiring and God knows what else, it's the same thing with an engine, once you start doing a renovation, you find more and more and more stuff, as far as, I'm sorry, the second half of your question was?
The trade-in.
Oh, the trade-in, yeah, we don't, we don't know our trade-in value until we actually go out and work with different vendors, and then they'll come in and each vendor proposes, we tell them what we have to trade and they send someone to look at it, and it could be $20,000, it could be $10,000, they buy it and then they turn around and I don't know what they do with it, most of them go overseas to departments in Europe or in Asia, and that's where they're used.
Over here, please.
Tristan Bezzin, 104 Green Street, and I support keeping our infrastructure and our vehicles up to date, I think that's important, I have a question, though, about the funding source, I noted that the Finance Committee in their review had suggested that rather than borrowing to fund this, that there were some other sources, particularly ARPA, and I know this was part of a discussion last year, and those funds were ultimately not used, and as of this town meeting, there's just shy of $1.8 million remaining that need to be appropriated by the end of 2024, taking the fire truck out of that, or some other articles that were in the town meeting that would free up money to then fund the fire truck, that'd still leave, you know, over $500,000 in ARPA, but as of yet, it's my understanding is, there's no plan and it's not appropriated yet, so I think that maybe, I would ask the town, look at ways of using funding that is there, that doesn't add to the tax burden and take from other sources.
Thank you, before we.
I can address the ARPA question if you'd like?
Certainly, if you'd like to do that.
Let's go ahead, Chair of the Select Board, this product, this particular article would not be eligible for ARPA funds, the requirements for ARPA is, is one, as you said, that the appropriate, the decision needs to be made by the end of calendar year 2024, the expenditure also needs to be made by the end of calendar 2026, as the chief said, we won't have the truck in time, so if we appropriated that money, it would get locked in at the end of 2024, we wouldn't be able to do anything with it, and in two years, because we wouldn't have the truck, that money would go back to the federal government, so we're not gonna consider ARPA for this truck.
Okay, before we talk about a vote, I need to inform you that because there is borrowing in this article, it requires a two-thirds vote to pass, and even though we will see the numbers that come up on the screen when we've had our vote, I still need to verbally declare that it has met the two-thirds requirement, okay, with that being said, this is what we're voting on, I move the town vote to appropriate $1,250,000 for the purchase of a new rescue truck for the fire department, and to meet this appropriation, $492,920 shall be transferred from free cash, $11,238 shall be transferred from premium reserve, and $745,800, excuse me, $842 shall be raised by borrowing, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and the treasurer with the approval of the select board shall be authorized to issue bonds or notes therefore. The voting is open. And the vote is closed. I declare that Article 17 passes by the required two-thirds vote.
Thank you very much.
Article 18, CIP DPW Facilities, Facilities HVAC, HVAC Upgrades and Modernization.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $250,000 for the use of the Department of Public Works to fund replacement of select heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment at the police station, library, and senior center, and to meet said appropriation of $250,000 to be transferred from free cash for expenditure in fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, presentation by our DPW Director.
So this request is to fund replacement of aging HVAC equipment at the police station, library, and senior center, the request includes both the hard and soft costs associated with the projects, the recently completed facility condition assessment that we did for all of the town buildings identified a lot of needs, several of them were HVAC-related, excluding any unforeseen emergencies that may arise, the plan is to replace both ductless and standard split systems at the police station and at the library to replace the, and reconfigure the geothermals, I'm sorry, at the senior center, replace and reconfigure the geothermal system to allow more system flexibility, and at the, at the library to replace some air conditioning units that are having humidity controls in the large meeting room.
Thank you, may I hear from the Appropriations Committee on Article 18, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Appropriations Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Thank you, and may I hear from the Financial Planning Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee voted unanimously to recommend this article.
Thank you, any questions, concerns, matters of discussion on Article 18? Yes, over here.
I'm John Courtney, I live at 14 Kristen Drive, the question I have is, is the $250,000 net of incentives that you can get from MassSafe or the utilities?
It is, it is not net, as of yet, we do not get the incentive values until the design is done and the equipment is selected and submitted to National Grid and/or Eversource, so the process is you get a design firm on board, they come in, they spec out the equipment, that design firm then submits it to National Grid or Eversource, they then indicate what the incentive is, at which point, we can go out for construction bids, any funds that are not expended go back into the free cash coffers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
And any other questions on Article 18? Hearing none, this is what we're voting on, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $250,000 for the use of the Department of Public Works to fund replacement of select heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment at the police station, library, and senior center, and to meet said appropriation of $250,000 be transferred from free cash for expenditure in fiscal year 2024, the vote is open. Article 18 passes. Article 19, CIP DPW Facilities, Police Station Siding Replacement.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $540,000 for the use of the Department of Public Works to fund replacement of exterior building siding and trim at the police station building, and to meet said appropriation transfer, forty, sorry, $470,000 from free cash for expenditure in fiscal year 2024, and $70,000 from the surplus balance in Article 16 from the April 2023 Annual Town Meeting for Expenditure in Fiscal Year 2024.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. Mr. DPW Director?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this request is to fund the removal of the existing siding and trim at the police station and to install new vapor barrier siding and trim, the town found out during a recent contractor visit, site visit, that the existing siding will not support paint, this is due to systemic nail protrusions that are resulting, resulted from rotted clapboard and cupping of the clapboard as well as the trim, funding was approved last year, as you see, for $70,000 to paint the exterior, those funds were, that request was based on an estimate provided by a painting company, the funds were, the funds were allocated at town meeting, we went out there with a separate contractor to observe the conditions indicating that they were not, they would not support paint, the next approach was to hire an architect and a professional cost estimator to come up with a cost to remove the clapboard and reinstall new vapor barrier and new siding, either vinyl or clapboard, and new PVC trim, these funds will go toward both the soft costs as well as the hard costs for construction, we, you know, through engaging the architect and the cost estimator, put together a very detailed estimate, I know and understand a half a million dollars to side the police station sounds absurd, this is a prevailing wage project, this cost estimator provides professional services specifically to architects, I'm a civil engineer, preparing an estimate for a building envelope is well outside of my area of expertise, this is directly in these persons' area of expertise, my hope, my goal and objective is that this project comes in well under, there are options through the public procurement process to have a base bid for what we believe would be the most cost-effective approach, which I think is a commercial-grade vinyl siding, and have a bid alternate which would include potentially clapboard replacements, so it would be an in-kind improvement to the, to the building envelope, so I'm happy to take all the questions you have.
Before we take questions, I'd like to get the input on, from the Appropriations Committee?
The Appropriations Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
And may I hear from the Financial Planning Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Financial Planning Committee unanimously recommends approving this project.
Thank you, right in this aisle, over here, please?
Gib Chase, Juniper, Juniper Brook Development, I move that we strike this article from further discussion tonight until we can devote the proper time and attention to evaluating it, as far as I know, this was a last-minute unsolicited work estimate that came in, and you're right, it's $470,000 over last year's paint job, and it was not sure who authorized this, it was only come to light here in the last couple of, couple of weeks, and for those of you who have read the community advocate here just on Friday, you can get an idea of the frustration and the surprise and the questions that have all arisen out of this, we're not against fixing up the police station, Chief Griffin and the, and the station will be taken care of, he knows that, I just don't think it was fair, this is an exorbitant price, an exaggerated price, and I, you know, I don't know who gave the authority to go out and give it, I don't know how the appropriations and finance can, can even approve something like that, you know, within the days of an annual meeting, we're being asked here tonight to commit to a $540,000 reciting, there's no emergency, there's no safety issues here, the walls aren't falling in, the roof isn't caving in, there's no water seepage or black mold, the foundation's not crumbling, you do have to be careful when you walk by windows or stand. You do have to be careful when you walk by windows or stand because of bricks. But other than that, I, you know, I'm just frustrated at knowing that, and I know that the select board up there has not gone through and fully, you know, evaluated this. We've had no input, the residents. And Scott, you know, I, it's a lot of money. And I, I think before this goes out to bid, you might say it's going to come in under that, but we're, we're committing to $540,000. I don't, I don't think that's fair. So I'd like to have another, I'd like to have, I'd like to have further meetings and I'd like to have the select board. I know they're not all in favor of just throwing this out here tonight, even though that's what's happening. But we need to discuss this more. We'll get, we'll get your, your station fixed up and done, but $540,000, which, which of course, folks, is, there's a hundred, over $100,000 for installation. Let me tell you, if a truck drives up in your driveway and says, if I got a deal for you today and this, this is only good for today, and you're going to jump at something like this without questions on it, you got to, I think we owe it to ourselves to, to discuss this further. Thanks.
Mr. Moderator, may I respond?
You may.
Thank you. I don't disagree that $540,000 aside the police station seems like a, an absorbent amount of money. The $70,000 that was allocated by this, by this body last year for painting was not able to be spent on painting. I'm, again, I'm a civil engineer, I do not do architectural estimates. I put together a supplemental funding request in the capital plan, right after we found out the $70,000 were not adequate. The number that I had presented forward was $130,000 for a total of $230, $200,000 for the project. That value, which seemed high at the time, was questioned by some of our, some of our officials behind me. So the decision was to go out to a professional, an architect, an architect that we have under contract for the town hall feasibility study. Them and their professional cost estimator developed this at a, at a fee so that there was some backup to what I thought was a reasonable number of $200,000. That, I, I'm shocked at a $540,000 number as well, but I can't argue with an expert who provides me with their experience and their, their estimate.
Yeah, Mike Leonard, Niger River Brook Road, North Pole, Massachusetts. I'm going to hear, this is the fallacious nature of deferring to experts and stuff like that. Okay, it does not cost, okay, to pay $540,000 for aesthetics like trim and stuff and, and saying, well, I'm just going to defer, like, half of you people are educated at prestigious universities supposedly, okay? Yet you all think like a bunch of bees, right? We, the select board unanimously approves. You think, you've been trained to think like robots, okay? Common sense, okay? $540,000 can be used, like, if you're going to spend that much, build a medieval castle, okay? But for, for, you know, trim and, and siding, like, this is all aesthetic stuff, and obviously anybody who's into construction, okay, knows that it does not cost that much unless you're putting some secret technology that's super expensive within the trim to defend the police station, right? But, 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 no, really, really, like, let's, let's think about this, that where that money can go instead, okay? And this is all corruption. You're paying this specialist and this specialist has to pay this exorbitant fee for this specialist. And then you have, this is the problem with specialization. This is the problem with reductionism in the education system, training people to be specialized robots. You're all a bunch of money worshippers, okay? That's all you think about. You, you don't use your brains, your education is a facade, you think like bees, okay? That you can't put the common sense because all you need is your money and you're defrauding the people and it's a crime against God and man. So take this money and use it to build housing, use it to build infrastructure, use it to build a sewer system, the stuff that we actually need in this town, not stupid aesthetics like trim and stuff like that. It's not cost $540,000. Give me a break. That's, you know, so, so much for all your fancy education.
Sir, could you stay, could you stay on point, please?
I am on point, but your reductionist education trains you to think like robots, so you can't make connections.
Sir, 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 please step away from the microphone.
What are you going to do about it?
Don't force me.
Mr. Moderator, a minute. Go ahead, you want to answer? Yeah, but quickly. The process that we, that we go through on a typical construction project, you get a, a very conservative cost estimate on a project. You request funding, you hire an engineer or an architect, a design firm to prepare a package. That package defines what is going to be constructed. I described that briefly in the HVAC article. That's going to happen again on this building. Once that design is put together, we know what the components are, what the level of quality that we're going to put on the street for public bid. Once it goes out for public bid, we award it to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. I don't know what that number's going to be. I don't know what the community, what the select board may want for the end product for the police station or the police chief. There's a big difference between, I'll use, I'll use an industry product, hardy board, clapboard, and vinyl siding that you get at a discount store. There's a wide range of difference. And, you know, again, I believe $540,000 is crazy to side a police station. If there's a concern that how this money gets expended and what level of quality or treatment that the police station gets, you know, I'm the DPW director, I'm responsible for facilities, police chief is responsible for his operations. I'm happy to go through the select board throughout the design and bidding and awarding process to make sure that, you know, you're comfortable that I'm not recommending a $530,000 siding project because we have $540 to spend. If it comes in at 230 and it's vinyl siding and it's commercial grade, that would be fantastic. That's, that's 300 grand that goes back into the free cash to go toward what gentleman earlier said about, you know, not borrowing but using, using available funds. Again, I, I, I want this to come in as low as possible. If there's any way that the voting body can be comfortable that it does, I'm willing to accommodate.
Over here, please.
Bill Hamaian, 15 Edmunds Way. So I'm a design professional and I'm also a construction supervisor. I get tasked to do special energy efficiency buildings and envelopes. And I've done 7,000 square foot homes that have R40 walls and the heating bill is like 200 bucks a month. And, you know, spending, to do something like that, that big, that's like 300 grand to get the design professionals, to get the architects and all that stuff. So that's a big amount of money for not that big a building. My question is going to be two parts. One is, is there going to be an energy efficiency study before you even consider the siding? Is that going to be part of the proposal? And the second part is, can we, just for tonight, lower the amount we're asking for? And then if we need to go higher, we can do it another vote?
The first question, the energy efficiency component will be part of the cost analysis that the design architect performs. Much larger building projects, as this body has seen in the past, typically, like the fire station, comes forward with a request for design services. Whatever that number is, those design services get a final design and a detailed construction cost estimate. That number then goes to the, to the town meeting for, for approval for construction. That would be the alternative to, to the full funds here. My goal is to get this building sealed up quickly and not forego another year. And again, if there's, if there's an opportunity for, for the select board to shepherd the project through and just have me serve as a, as a project manager for it, I'm wide open to that because my, I, this, I want it to be a 200,000, 250,000 dollar project. That's what it should be. That's what I thought it was. And I, I can't come up here and not present what experts in an area, field that I don't know much about, provide it to us.
So can we ask tonight that that amount be lowered or is that not possible?
It's up to the motion, whoever created the, a motion.
Can I make the motion?
I, I'm Tim again. I just, excuse me, I don't want to belabor this, but this started in 2022 with a $50,000 ask, came back last year with another 20 for painting. Our expertise is not in building, right? I mean, that's, what we have to do is go out and hire someone, which we did for $2,800 to give us the estimate that we have before us. We don't think that's going to be the number that we procure this at, but I wouldn't want, to answer your question, I wouldn't want to go lower and then in two months we go out to bid and it's higher and then have to call a special town meeting just for that one piece. Because this is about, I don't know, Andy's going to have to tell me eight, 12,000 bucks to run a town meeting ballpark. So, again, we won't, we won't expend it. First of all, you have the failsafe of the board to, to sign and execute that contract and oversee the scope of what will actually be done there. As we go out there and we witness the water damage, it, it seems to keep getting worse, right? We started at 50, we went to 70, we went to 200, now we're at 560. I think if we wait any longer, I, we have emergency equipment in this building. It needs to be secured, it needs to be weather tight. I, I don't like the number, I just, it, it is what it is from some third party. Until we go out to bid, we're not going to know the exact number. And we can't go out to bid because no contractor's going to bid if we don't have an appropriation. So we're kind of stuck.
Okay.
Tim?
Mr. Case?
Yeah.
You, you were in line before, after these people behind you were.
She just let me in.
But what about the people behind her?
Fred, she just let me in. I got a quick question while I can remember it.
Make it very quick, please.
While I can remember it. Tim, Tim, did you, did you just say that you already have decided on a, on a bottom line, if you can get it for 200,000, you'll, you'll do it, you've already got it? But you want us to, you want us to okay a $540,000 thing tonight, possibly?
No.
What, what did you say? I can't hear you when you're talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tim was walking through the lineage of financing. We originally thought it was 50,000 bucks, came back and asked for another 20 to get to the 70 from last year. They asked a civil engineer, how much it costs to work on a building envelope? I don't know. I threw 130 at it, figuring 200 is absolutely enough to do the siding of the police station. That 200,000 was questioned by, by the officials behind me. Rightfully so, because I'm a civil engineer, I don't know about this. So we hired an architect and a professional architectural estimator who came back with 540. That's how we got to this absurd number, I'll just say it. And again, we don't know what the number is until the bid comes in. The only way to control what the numbers in the bid will be, the range, is based on what product we specify. Is it cement board, top of the line? Is it, you know?
Okay, so without knowing, without knowing those details, Scott, you're, you're, you're asking us here to approve, as you've got it written out, make a motion of $540,000. And then we'll play, roll the dice and see what happens. Is that right?
That's, that's not correct. My goal and objective is to bid out a quality product.
Well, I know what your goal and objective is, but...
I'm sorry, sir. My, my, my goal is to bid out a quality project for the community that gives them the, meets the needs for the most cost-effective manner. And if there's a concern that, that that would not be the case, the select board, your elected officials here are more than willing to see the project through design selection, construction bid award. So design selection, meaning what are we putting on the building? What's the architect going to bid out? Is it vinyl siding? Is it gold leaf? And then when the bid comes in, do we award it? Do we award an, an alternate to make it better? Do we have a deduct to take some money off the top? That's fine. I, I will shepherd the project however the, I'll, I'll see the project through however the select board sees as best for, for, for the taxpayer.
Well, the select board just had their meeting there last week and they were just about as surprised with all of this as we should be and we are. And I, I still don't, you know, I, I know you may have an objective in mind that you want to do, but you're asking us to approve a motion tonight for 540,000 bucks.
I'm sorry, but, you know, the discussion you said was a very quick question. It's gotten into a long question. There are other people...
That's why I wanted to strike it. Lies, lies, lies.
If I hear any more yelling, I will ask that that person be removed.
Freedom of speech, let's not keep asking my chief. Shut up. What are you going to do about it?
Over here, please.
Norm Corbin, Norm Corbin, 35 Whitney Street. My question is process. I guess I don't understand how procurement really works in the town. Why couldn't we put, why couldn't we put out a request for proposals now, get hard numbers, make a decision of what we want, and then most likely we're having a fall meeting? And at the fall meeting, vote that project in? Is that something wrong with my logic?
There, there, there is.
Sorry, I'm so...
Your point is?
Mr. Moderator, can we do something about the destructions in the back?
I have warned the gentleman multiple times, if necessary, he will have to leave the hall.
So the, the process, it is to find my master in the law, chapter 149, for building project construction. You secure, you procure an architect to do the design services. That architect provide, you can select them based on price, you can select them based on qualifications and price, or just on qualifications. That architect moves forward with the project that you've defined the scope of, fix the exterior envelope of the police station. We want different cost estimates for different materials. Once they get closer, further through the design, the cost estimate comes tighter and tighter and tighter into what they believe the construction bidding will be. When that's done, they put a, a bid package together, advertise it publicly on the street, they secure public bids in sealed envelopes. Those envelopes are opened from contractors, we award it to the lowest responsible and responsive contractor. In that bid package, it can include deducts and additions. So you can bid it out for hardy board with 10 layers of paint on it, but have a deduct to be vinyl siding from a big box retailer, or vice versa. So you have some flexibility on what you obtain for a project scope, but you cannot go out on the street after funding and say, I want, with an RFP that says, I want somebody to do this to the building and then I get a price. It's a two-step process. Get an architect, then get a contractor. The architect phase is when you decide what you want to do to the building. And that's what I'm...
So do you have the architect phase completed now?
No, we, we hired a professional architect to do the estimate only. It was 2,800. Again, my 200,000 dollar number that I pulled out of my civil engineering hat was questioned and I went to an expert in the field.
So can you, can you use any of the $70,000 that was allocated for painting to support an architect to figure this thing out?
That was one of the first questions we posed and because of the way the article was written, we could not. The article was written that we, the intent of the, of the, of the paint job was, we were going to spec it out internally. The town staff specified and bid out and oversaw the construction phase for the police station gutters and roof replacement, I don't know, five years ago, six years ago. That's small enough for us to do in-house. I'm, I can procure that. Anything over 100,000 dollars of construction for architectural services, I'm a civil engineer, I can't do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Over here, please.
Caitlin Boricini, 5 Mashpee Circle. I just want to say a quick comment. Thank you for being so transparent on your civil engineering background and trying to explain it for the rest of us. My question is, this building is approximately in the 80s, is that correct? So how long do we have in this current facility? And then is it possible for us to look towards other towns and having like a larger emergency set? I was privileged to tour Shrewsbury's new police department. It is lovely, large, has space for them to grow. They have an in-house for all of their emergency calls. And that's something that is not, to my knowledge, currently available in the police department. And in order for us to grow into town, I'm wondering, you know, are we kind of getting to the end of our lease, so to speak?
If I may, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, you may.
To answer your question, ma'am, the building was built and occupied in 1988. I was a little kid at the time and I, I probably would have designed it with brick, but I wasn't there to make that decision. I don't think the, the clapboard was a great choice at that time. The town of Auburn has the same architect and builder as ours. Their station's almost identical and I, I think they're experiencing some of the same issues. To answer your question about the life expectancy of the building, in 2029, I believe, we have a feasibility study for the building and I was upfront with the committees behind me. We're doing okay in that building. I foresee probably another 25, 30 years in that building. Why not, right? I mean, you wouldn't move out of your house at 70 years old. I think, you know, there's going to be some needs down the road and after that study hopefully gets approved in, in a few years, I could foresee, you know, a small addition, window replacement. But all in all, we're, we're doing okay. We could use a little more space. I worry about this current state of the building. I worry about this current state of the building, um, for a couple of different reasons. Um, just the overall equipment inside that we have. We're not experiencing water issues at the moment. But I worry about, you know, next year. It, you know, uh, as you can see from some of these pictures, it's not pretty. Um, it's embarrassing. I mean, plain out embarrassing. It's one of the fir-, it is the first public building you come into from town from Route twenty entering Marlborough. And it's, it's just, it's just embarrassing right now. We're an accredited police department. I'm embarrassed to bring assessors over or other police departments, uh, even bad guys, for instance. Um, it's, you know, it, it's just, um, and-
I'm always proud to educate people.
That's right, Mike. Um, I, I just, I just, um, uh, you know, and, you know, I'm sorry that the cost is what it is. Um, I certainly don't want to ask you folks for that. I mean, that, that is a lot of money. Um, I just don't see it getting any cheaper. And I worry that if it doesn't pass tonight, then, then what happens? And I don't know. Uh, you know, I, I've sat here before the last couple of years as the lieutenant. And, um, we've discussed getting our building done and it hasn't gotten done. Um, I just worry about the, the water, the potential future water damage in the equipment that we have inside. We operate our dispatch center, our nine-one-one dispatch center. All, all of that equipment could be exposed. We need this building watertight. We need it sealed and we need, we need, we just need to get it done. And I'm sorry for the price.
Over here, please.
Yeah, Jeff Amberson, two sixty Green Street. I'm Scott first. Thanks for, I guess, all your patience or whatever tonight. It is appreciated. Um, I have a question for you and I think it might help people to maybe understand the cost just a little bit. You mentioned that this comes under the prevailing wage law. And I'm not sure if a lot of people understand, you know, what that is and how that affects the overall cost. And maybe if you could explain that and if you know what the, uh, you know, the adder is because of the prevailing wage law, let folks know. Thank you.
Certainly. So prevailing wages are, um, minimum wages that are set by the state. Uh, they have prevailing wage tables that come out for every, um, county. And it, when I was a young engineer going out on the job site, every, every job was either a prevailing wage job or a labor, labor job. The vast majority of them are prevailing wage. As a professional, you go out on the job site, you are the lowest paid person there. Um, laborers are bringing in in the sixties, uh, dollar an hour range. So it's a lot different than, um, you know, twenty-five dollar an hour under, under the tables, coming in and just putting your siding up and leaving. Prevailing wages on a, it, it varies on the size of the project and how much the materials cost. Um, but on a low material cost project like this, most of this is labor. You're tearing down all the, all the clapboard, all the trim work. You're rewrapping it in a tieback, in a vapor barrier. Um, and then you're putting up a somewhat affordable product. Um, it can easily double the cost, if not, um, more for, for a project. The HVAC project I was talking about earlier, the wage rates don't make that much of a big difference. Um, a, a HVAC tradesman makes very good money when he's not prevailing wages. And the equipment they're installing is very expensive. That's the exact opposite here. You have laborers and you have low-cost materials. So prevailing wages really impacts a project of this type substantially.
Over here, please.
Jake Kruskowski, twenty-four School Street. I happen to also be a design professional and I'm actually deep into a renovation of my house right now, doing siding and everything. You compare that to the difference of prevailing wages, I, I would say you're probably in a three to four hundred percent increase paying prevailing wages over what I'm paying. Um, my concern is again, and I, I go back to some, what some of the other people are saying, is that we just got this last minute. We threw out this number. I know it came from an architect and his estimator. I understand how that whole process works. I deal with it daily. Um, I don't like the notion of being said, we can get the lowest of siding qualities in vinyl, or we can get fiber cement or composite or something. I feel like it's a disservice to the town to have such a wide range of materials because in my opinion, a civic building should not be done in vinyl. And I don't think that fits with the image that people want to portray in this town as, you know, we talk about what is the, you know, what is Northboro? What's, what's the image of Northboro? A vinyl sided police station, it doesn't seem like it meets the criteria. I mean, we wouldn't, a design review board wouldn't typically approve that for any other civic building. And we're, and we're saying like, all right, you know, if this comes in at five hundred and forty thousand dollars for vinyl siding, then I would be as hard a no as I could possibly be. If you're telling me it's composite, fiber cement, you might sway me. But it just, it seems like there's just such a huge range of unknowns at this point. And to be honest with you, I don't have faith. You're, you're saying that the, the selectmen and selectwomen will, are, are our final judge here? I've never seen them say no to, to funding something. Like, it's just money, 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 money. My taxes go up five, six hundred dollars a year. I've never seen anybody say no. So I don't trust them as being stewards of my tax money. Um, so it's, it's a concern that there's such a wide range of material, materials that we're going to use and costs. And I appreciate you, you're acknowledging that, yes, I'm a civil engineer. I wouldn't tell you how much a sore cost, but like looking at this and I'm like, I would love to go out and measure it myself and talk to Cilio, my guy. I know he's not prevailing wages, but I'm afraid to go out there because the police are going to ask you why I'm out there with my tape measure. But, I mean, you know, I'd like to be involved and understand, you know, where, where this cost is coming from. Because it just, for vinyl, it's no way. Like, it's just crazy. So.
So to, to respond to the variable materials, the construction cost estimate of five hundred and forty thousand dollars based on commercial grade vinyl siding. And when I asked the architect, what's the adder for, uh, just clapboard? Not, not cement board, not, not PVC, but just conventional clapboard? It was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar adder. Um, which I was, that's why we're here, talking about five forty and not, you know, seven hundred.
Over here in the aisle, please.
Um, Megan Robbins, one hundred Weston Terrace. Um, so besides the finances, what are the risk factors to not having this done? Um, I know at the elementary schools, we've been talking about Alice drills and saying that you guys can get there in two minutes if anything happens. That's what we've been telling our students. Um, but if something happens, if there's water damage to any of the materials, would that keep you guys from being able to respond? Do you have backups? I just, I'm thinking about this from a safety perspective. There, there must be more than aesthetic for your concerns. I mean, I trust you guys and they're just, I'm trying to just wrap my head around that.
There are portions of the clapboard that you can pull back, as you can see the cupping in the photograph. Um, I was able to pull back some of the clapboard and look, the vapor barrier there is non-existent. I did not see any presence of black mold. But again, I pulled back probably four or five pieces of clapboard, maybe twelve, fourteen inches. Wasn't much. But I didn't see any black mold yet. That's my concern about, you know, the safety of the, of the, the department, is that if there's weights and black mold, uh, you know, propagates, then it's on the sheathing. And that's a lot of, that's a lot, that's a lot different than just stripping and wrapping.
Thank you for your concerns and, you know, we, we, we will be there to answer those calls, one way or the other. Um, we, you know, if we had a, some sort of failure, um, whether it be water or whatever, we would, um, default to the fire station that has a, uh, operation center there with communications that we could operate out of. And we would also ask for mutual aid from another, uh, police department. Clearly, we don't want to have to get there, but, uh, we would have, we do always have backup plans and we will be there.
Over here, please.
Hi, I'm Kristen Wickstead, uh, two syrup Brook Lane. I'm also a member of the select board. And I'm not running for reelection, so I'm not going to be on your select board too much longer. So I feel like I'm the one person of the five-member board who can speak up for the board right now. This is a very complicated, um, discussion. And if it wasn't clear from a couple of Scott's comments, um, where he said, you know, the, the board rightfully didn't trust my civil engineering hat and made me go out and get a quote. I think, um, if you missed that, then just, you might want to just watch a meeting once in a while to understand how stingy the board is actually being about this. If it were up to me, I, I, and this is not really my best thing, um, any kind of budgeting thing. I am the person who's like, yeah, sure. We trust them. Let's just let them have the money. But the rest of the board is not like that. And you all need to know that, okay? Just so you understand, I'm not going to be on the board anymore. You're, you're free of all the people who are like, yeah, spend all the money. Um, and some of the other previous board members are on appropriations now. So, and I'm not dissing them because I literally agree with them on a lot of things. But just so you understand, like, if you want to know what's going on on these boards and you're getting up and you're frustrated with people, you should watch some meetings. Thank you.
Over here, please.
Yes, Doug Stone, thirty-three Birch Hill Road, Northboro. And first of all, I'd like to thank the town, who's very responsible for the electronic voting system. It's long overdue. Um, and it protects our, um, our, our privacy and it's more efficient. And also, um, I'd also like to thank the town planner and our new town administrator for the videos that they did, for explaining that there weren't articles. Thought that was very helpful and, and, um, nice. And as far as this article goes, um, I know it's a different project than the historical society that we painted last year for only twenty thousand dollars. But it just seems, um, I guess, I, I, I'm just wondering why we absolutely need an engineer to tell us how to replace clapboards and trim. And in short, I would like to make a motion that we reduce the appropriation by fifty percent to two hundred and seventy thousand. And, um, have the, give the town encouragement to, to make this work.
Would I, would-
Question?
Wait a minute. We have another step to take first. Would either the DPW director or the town administrator care to respond to that motion?
I just want to make sure, um, we're clear on the, the motion, Doug. You had said reduce it to fifty percent.
Yes.
I'm going to go back to the motion here. The motion is for four hundred and seventy.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay. So then we-
What was the, and what was the end number you were looking for?
Um, so two seventy altogether. So this says that you're going, you've already got seventy. So you're going to raise, raise, uh, four seventy. So, um, it would just be, um, two hundred. We'd be asking for two hundred instead of five forty. Instead of four seventy.
I don't have a response.
So it's, okay?
So the, the result will be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Seventy thousand from last year and your motion-
Yes.
To reduce the two hundred. Okay. Just making sure it's clear in the room.
Okay. So we have a motion that's been made from the floor to reduce the request for another two hundred thousand dollars opposed to the four seventy thousand. Is that cor-, was that your motion? I will need that motion in writing if that's the case.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
No, hey. No, it hasn't. It's been, no, no, let me speak. It's United States of America. And you all see me in court when I sue all you guys, but, um, now-
I'm sorry, sir, but you have not been recognized.
Oh, well, too bad. So are you, you going to recognize me? Come on.
I'm, I'm dealing with this motion right now. Okay? So that's the focus.
Yep. Calm down and wait your turn. What are you going to do? Man. Everybody gets to speak. Everybody has freedom of speech. I agree. But you need to wait your turn. Oh, okay. There's a way of doing things. Procedurism, right? Obedient workers.
I'm back. Okay, sorry for the delay. What we have is there was an amendment from the floor, uh, on, on Article nineteen. Um, and, uh, the amendment was to reduce the requested appropriation from free cash of four seventy, four, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars from free cash. That is, uh, this motion would reduce that to two hundred thousand dollars from free cash. And the motion has been made and seconded. Uh, and that's what we have on the floor now. Any discussion or debate on the amendment only? Over here, please.
Mr. Moderator, Jacob Jones, one oh six Green Street. I rise in favor of the amendment and I would have voted no on the original article. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here, please. Nothing? Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. My brother wanted to speak and now he doesn't want to speak? Come on.
No, wait a minute. I'm the moderator. Excuse me, sir. Sir.
It's for the amendment only. I have no comments on the amendment. I have comments on the original article. I'm waiting my turn. Maybe you can learn something by doing that.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Hey, wait, whoa, 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 whoa.
What's your, what's your statement? What do you want to say?
Let me make a statement. Okay, on the foundation, you, you mentioned something about the foundation needing repair, uh, due to water damage, right? It's just a little bit of water, okay? A little bit of water. Okay, water is not a cursed object. I thought that we're not superstitious in this post-religious age, but apparently we are. And secondly, a little mold, if there's a little mold, it does not cause cancer. Most of you are scientists, but you can empirically prove that. Okay? Secondly, so i- if the foundation doesn't need any work, okay, if there's a little bit of water and if there's destructive, okay, and most of the things that would be in the, in the basement of that are things that the water probably wouldn't cause damage to. You can always elevate the stuff off the floor very cheaply. You do not have to spend thousands of thousands of dollars and get this expert and that expert who will cost you a large sum of money.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, sir.
But, but, no. Hear me out, hear me out.
Your point, you are not sticking to the point.
See, you guys, you, 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 no. But see, that's a reductionist-
What is your, what is your point, sir?
You have a wrong paradigm. My point being, okay, is that you believe in appeal to authority. That's a logical fallacy philosophically. Okay?
Wait, wait, no.
You, you listen to the content, right? You have to listen to the whole-
What does that, what does that have to do with the amendment motion?
Okay, it's not about yes and no. It's about talking about ideas and discussing, not yes and no.
All right.
But, uh-
That's it. Please remove this man from the hall. I'd like to apologize to the body for that. We shouldn't have a town meeting that has that kind of behavior. Over here, please.
My name is Charles Frankie, and I move the question.
Question has been moved, seconded. Can we put that up on the, on the screen? Okay?
Move the question on the motion on, on the amendment.
Yeah, move the question. Okay, now this will require a two-thirds vote. We had a motion and there was a second to move the question, so that's what we're doing now. Anybody have any questions, or does everyone understand that?
To clarify, this is a motion on the amendment?
It's on the amendment only.
Yes.
Okay? We are still on the amendment. So, the, the vote is open now. All right, we're voting, there was an amendment made, and the amendment that we were having discussion about was reducing the, the, the funding for the, for Article nineteen from the four thousand seven hundred dollars to two hundred thousand dollars. That was the motion. The discussion was on that. What we're vot, and then as discussion went on, there was a motion to move the question or take a vote. What we're doing is taking a vote to say, are we going to, to support this, this amendment or not? Point of order? That's correct, that's correct. We're voting, deciding to vote and end all discussion, okay? Is that clear? Now, remember, what, what are the questions?
Mr. Moderator.
Just one moment, please.
Mr. Moderator, through you, the motion to move the question just essentially suspends debate on discussion relative to the motion to amend. It's subject to a two-thirds vote. If the body votes in favor of the mov, moving the question via a two-thirds vote, then we just move to vote on the amendment, okay? And then if it's, if that amendment's approved, then the new motion is the two hundred thousand from free cash and the seventy from the other, from the other appropriation.
Correct. That's correct, that's what it means. Okay? So, are we ready to vote? Okay, everyone's clear on it. Voting is open. Okay, voting has slowed down, so we have five more seconds. And voting is closed. Okay, the motion to move the question has passed by the required two-thirds vote. I declare that it meets the two-thirds requirement. So, where are we now? We are back at the amendment and talking about the amendment and what's going on. We've had some discussion about the amendment, is there further discussion about the amendment? Your point is well taken, sir. We are now voting on the amendment, okay? And voting is open. Five more seconds. Voting is closed. So, are, the amendment for Article nineteen passes. So, what that means is, it's been reduced. Did someone just yell out something? One moment, please, we, we still have some issues that we have to finish. So, what this means is the article has been amended to the two hundred thousand dollars from the original four seventy. So, we need to vote on that now, okay? I hear a lot, I hear a lot of voices. Are there questions? Are people understanding where we are? Yes.
If I could just ask the proposer, if he could tell us that the two hundred thousand that would be appropriated, what is the parameter which we work under to get this project underway? What can we do with this funds, with these funds?
Move forward with the process, and I guess I would question, again, why we would need an engineer? Is this like a state requirement?
It is for one forty-nine construction, yes. But, so, I'm just, I just want to be clear with the body, we, we would be able to go through that process of hiring, we didn't paint, we didn't use the seventy thousand for painting to hire an engineer. So, we've got two hundred and seventy thousand to work with. If this two hundred thousand passes, we could go through that process and go out to bid, if it comes out lower or higher. We can come back to the body. I think it's an incentive to make it work with the two seventy, and it sounds like Mr. Sharptier wants to help that if he can. I don't think we need to have vinyl siding, and I'd just like to put it back to the experts we have in the town. You said two seventy a minute ago, but the mo, this motion was for two hundred thousand. Two hundred, but we've got seventy already, that's, that we didn't use.
But that's not part of the motion that you made.
No, I changed the, the four seventy to the two hundred.
That's right, but you didn't add in the seventy as part of the motion.
Where's that voice coming, where's that voice?
I didn't change that.
I'm reading your motion, it doesn't say anything about the seventy thousand that was left over.
Okay, I'll put it in.
You have to move it as part of, the original motion had everything together. I make a motion to add, to move the balance of the two thousand twenty-three seventy thousand to add to the two hundred thousand, so for a grand total of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
After, you know, having a consultation with, with the town council, it's the opinion that that seventy was, it was there to begin with, and it was always there, and the only number that was modified by Mr. Stone was the four seventy, and that was reduced to the two hundred.
Yes.
Therefore, the total budget, if this should pass, would be two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
But we, yeah.
Is that, is that your understanding?
Yes, and it's my understanding that this, we already voted on this.
No.
Because that's what it says on the screen.
No. That was, that was a, a, a...
All right.
Amendment to the original motion. So, we've covered the amendment, now we're back at the original motion with the amended value for the, the, the budget.
So, voting on the two seventy then, basically?
Yeah, you're voting on two hu, you're voting as you worded it, two hundred plus the additional seventy that was in the first, in the original article.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Have I confused people, or do we understand where we are? Okay? Sir, you had a question quite some time ago. Are you good?
Hi, Edward Reese, three twenty Howard Street. I just want to bring everybody's myriad thoughts back to one central point, and that is what this motion originally was. From, from hearing the discussion, I'll be honest, I did get lost a little bit along the way, but I've ultimately understood, and I don't think that everybody does have an understanding, this is a very simple, straightforward request. They wanted to change the siding, they, they wanted to repaint the police department, they can't do that, the siding won't support that. Okay, done, we already have some money for that, it's done. Okay. Now they decided, okay, well, since we've got to replace the siding, how do we do that? So, they brought in an expert, they asked for a consultation, and they got it. The number that the consultant gave, we can all agree is absolutely ridiculous, but it is what the expert brought forward, so that is what our DPW director has brought forward. What we are voting on here is we already have this money. We're not talking about raising taxes, we're not talking about borrowing money from the state at whatever interest rate, we're talking about taking money that we already have and just kind of earmarking it, saying, okay, this money is for reciting the poli, the police station. And quite frankly, it's most likely not going to be that ridiculously high number. That is just the ceiling, that is the maximum level that we're willing to go to. And I don't see why that has sparked over an hour of conversation, frankly. So, I would just like to say, let's please move on with the vote.
Sir, you've been patiently waiting, do you have a, a short question?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, my, my issue is, is it really necessary? I was at the police station, I didn't see, I mean, I'm not an expert, but is there any structural damages on, on the siding? Can we, is there not in, can we not sideboards replaced? Was, and then is this a gutter problem or is it a siding problem? There were only nails and a little bit nails outstanding, is the siding which we have right now, not a cedar siding which, which I have knowledge about, and that would be one of the best siding which is available? So, and then, the last question which I have, of the appropriate committee and also the Board of Selectmen, who was at the site? I would like to know only the percentage, an anonymous percentage of when they make an, a recommendation, what we can trust there, who was really on the site and sources? Thank you very much.
To answer the first question, yes, it needs to be done. The clapboard is rotted and the nails are falling out, and the vapor barrier is nonexistent, I can look under the clapboard and see sheathing, that's not what a public safety building should look like. Okay, so, this is what we are voting on one last time, okay? We are voting on the amended Article nineteen. That says, it says this, see if the town will appropriate the sum of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the use of the Department of Public Works to fund the replacement of exterior building siding and trim at the police station building, and to meet said appropriation, the sum of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars be raised by taxation, transferred from available funds, borrowed or otherwise appropriated. Clarification, it's two hundred thousand dollars from the free cash area, and then the previous article that was passed for the seventy thousand dollars for painting is added to that, so we have a grand total of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Is that clear? Okay? Two hundred and twenty-one of you are, have already voted. Please, can we have the rest of you vote? Five seconds? Okay, the voting is closed. And the amended article passes. As I look at my timepiece, we have reached the hour of ten PM, and by our structure and bylaws, we have reached our deadline time. I would like to thank each and every one of you for your civic duty and responsibility and your civility this evening. I, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to, to tomorrow evening at six PM. Motion's been made, and did I get a second? All those in favor? One last thing, please leave your clickers here. They're set to go off two hours after it leaves the building, okay? Thank you so much.